Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council meeting. Edina City Council, it's Wednesday, February 7, 2018. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Brindell.
Here.
Member Fisher.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Havland.
Here. Manager Neil, was there anything you wanted to do with respect to the meeting agenda in terms of additions or deletions?
No, Your Honor. It's good as presented.
Anyone from council, otherwise entertain a motion to approve the meeting agenda as shown.
Second.
Got a motion of second to approve the meeting agenda as shown. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Community comment, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? All right, hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on from community comment to the adoption of the consent agenda. And is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right, not hearing anything, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda as shown?
Second.
Got a motion of second to adopt the items on the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Carried. Before we move into the next section of the agenda, which is special recognitions and presentations, I just want to let everybody know here and at home that we have Boy Scout Troop 48 with us.
Ah.
Boy Scouts, raise your hands. There. And then we've got some AP government students here as well. Where are they? Raise your hands, please. Yeah, we've got some overland.
Ah, very nice.
So, we're gonna, if you, the Boy Scouts, if you want to verify your presence here, we're gonna take a picture. And the same thing for the AP students. So, you guys want to come up in front?
Documentation.
You guys mind coming up and stand right up here?
It's proof.
This is their worst nightmare.
And then there'll be public testimony.
This is our form of hazing.
For extra credit.
We'll do, uh, the whole group, we can do AP students and Boy Scouts.
Yeah, whatever.
Now, the uniforms come out. Oh, other students, too?
Are there other students?
Okay, do this.
All right, here, one, two, three, look at me, guys. One more.
Now, other students, anyone else who want to come from AP to AP Congress? Prove you're here.
Mrs. Nimmo wants to see you.
If this doesn't get you extra credit, nothing.
Perspective Planning Commission members?
Come up, please, all right? So, anybody else?
She's running up here.
Okay, yeah, so you two, why don't you, hold it tall. Come over here, stand right here, come right here.
There we go now.
Okay, guys, look at me, and take three, ready? One, two, three, smile. One, two, three, smile. And one more.
Thank you, you're coming. Do you have cards or anything you can give people?
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna get the photo.
Yeah.
We'll post it on Facebook.
All right, there you go. We're gonna move on now to the portion of the agenda that deals with special recognitions and presentations, and we have a special presentation this evening from our Energy and Environment Commission with regard to what they call their initiative number six. And this deals with the problems that we're facing as a state, as a city, with salts, with chlorides. So, Tara Brown, our, from our staff, is gonna introduce the topic. She's our city sustainability coordinator. We've got Edina's Energy and Environment Commissioner, Luanne Waddick, here with us as well, and some other folks, too. So, Tara, welcome.
Well, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, I am here as Edina's Energy and Environment Commission liaison to just introduce Commissioner Waddick, her water quality working group, and the work that they have been working on with the EEC. As you know, our water is one of the number-one resources we cherish here in Minnesota, and they are always looking for ways that we can help improve the water quality. So, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Commissioner Waddick to share what they've been working on to help with salt reduction and the potential to support state legislation around that.
All right, thanks, Ms. Brown. Commissioner, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, thank you for having me. Can everybody hear me? Thank you for considering this resolution. We've been working really hard on it. We know what the problem is. Salt is building up in our environment. We know what the sources are, the three main sources are parking lots, sidewalks, and roads that we're putting de-icers on, and they're flooding into the streets and into our waterways. Nine Mile Creek and Minnehaw Creeks are already impaired for chloride, and coming off of our streets are making them worse. One teaspoon of salt permanently pollutes five gallons of water. We have no way to remove this. We cannot do reverse osmosis on our lakes. The cities in Mindott, we can go to our next slide, are making progress on their reduction. Oops, thank you. And the cities are protected for liability. We see that the gap lies with the private applicators. They clearly apply more salt from our pictures, these are pictures we've taken out of hundreds of pitchers in Edina. They clearly apply more salt than is needed because of their concern for slip-and-fall lawsuits and property damage. In Edina, the private contractors are responsible for 38 percent of the salt pollution. If the contractors were to apply the proper amount, it does ensure safety. Safety is our main concern. More salt does not make us more safe, it just pollutes more. We feel that the limited liability, as explained in our resolution, is a piece of the solution to reducing chloride pollution. MPCA data shows that applicators who go through the training make changes resulting, they usually make changes resulting in 30 to 60 percent less salt use. Contractors who are trained, certified, and documenting each event will have liability protection. We believe that this will compel them to apply less salt while still ensuring safety. There's many great examples. Edina Schools, for one, with Tim Myers, I gave you the sheet in your packet, have reduced their salt use per event from 500 to 1,000 pounds to zero to 150 pounds per event. Park Niklet, with 36 clinics, ill people, people on crutches, people in wheelchairs, are coming to their clinics, and no increased incidence of slip-and-fall. I think you saw from the information I gave you, they reduced their salt use by 45 percent in 2013 and '14, and additional 28 percent in 2015 and '16. In addition, they saved money, their landscape damage from salt was reduced 75 percent at 36 clinics. They plan another 10 percent reduction in 2016, '17. So, clearly, it can be done. Bloomington Schools, the U of M, City of Oconia, we have many examples of reductions in salt and people still being safe. This resolution, which supports the limited liability bill, will help to, let's go to the next slide, oops, here we go, protect businesses, protect water, clean water, reduce damage to our infrastructure, and show that Edina is a forward-thinking leader regarding our environment. As I stated, the city is already reducing its salt use. Let's help the private contractors working towards the same goal. Thank you.
Otherwise, we could entertain a motion to adopt a proposed resolution, which would be headlined, "The City of Edina Supports a State Law That Provides Limited Liability to Commercial Salt Applicators That Are Certified to an Established Voluntary Salt Applicator Certification Program." And then we have the body of the resolution following.
Jim, I have a quick question.
Sure.
Thank you. So, the language as I read it would protect those who are certified applicators. Would there be a protection for a private tenant or a private small business that was a tenant, or a property owner?
As I understand, it protects the business also.
Okay.
Since the contractor is working for the business.
But what about a homeowner who puts out salt using best practices?
I don't know about the private homeowner.
If they don't have the certified applicator certification?
Oh, if they don't, I don't know. I would assume they're not protected. You know, the training is from the MPCA, and they have to go through the training and show that they passed, and they're certified, and they're documenting each event.
It just seems like a lot of red tape or something that should be fairly simple.
Well, they aren't compelled to do it right now.
Okay.
You know, if they don't, if they're not protected from liability, they put down more and more and more.
Well, I think it's a good incremental first step, but I think perhaps in the future we can do even more.
For homeowners, are you saying, for residents?
Yes.
We have been doing education for homeowners, but we see this huge amount coming from the private contractors. Residents don't really contribute that much.
Right, okay, thank you.
So, looking for a motion and a second on the resolution as proposed.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion second on the proposed resolution from the Energy and Environment Commission with regard to salt applicators.
Yeah, can I just chime in on this, Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Commissioner Waddick, for your work on this. I know you've been putting a lot of time into this, and I applaud the effort. You know, one of the things we've talked about here is, as this year unfolds, we're gonna be working on our Comprehensive Water Resources Management Plan, a mouthful in itself. And this strikes me as right in that hitting zone, and while I think this is a good step, and we're supportive of legislation that can help make this better, you know, I think this is part of what we ought to be looking at in terms of how we manage our waterways, what, you know, we have so many different things that are affecting the quality of the water, and so I think this is a really nice first step, but there's lots more to do, and I'm confident with your leadership that we'll continue to do that at the Energy and Environment Commission.
We'll move on to the next one, and start working on that. Water softeners, of course, are a huge part of the problem.
Yeah, especially in our community where they're, you, just like ice, you need it because we've gotta melt the ice, you need it because we have hard water in Edina, but how are we managing that, and how do we take into account the potential damage, because it's significant and it's permanent?
We do, we do think this is just a piece of the problem, but we think it's an important piece.
Well, thanks for your work on it.
Thank you.
I'm going to a meeting in Duluth tomorrow with some mayors, and I'm gonna take the resolution with me, and I'm bringing this save our salt.
Thank you.
Visual device with me.
People love a.
And this is, this is my second one, so we got a motion and a second, any further comment or any other questions? Otherwise, all those in favor of their proposed resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
And thanks to the rest of the work group that's been working on this, appreciate your efforts.
Thank you, folks. And thank you, too, Ms. Brown. Now, we're gonna move on to the next portion of the agenda, which is the public hearing portion of the agenda for the students in the audience. We only have one public hearing this evening, and it involves the potential issuance of a license, taproom and Sunday sale liquor license, to a new brewing company that's opening in Edina called the Wooden Hill Brewing Company, and our clerk, Deb Mangan, is gonna introduce this topic. Clerk Mangan.
Thank you, Your Honor and council. James and Sean Ewen, doing business as Wooden Hill Brewing Company, LLC, have applied for a new brewer, taproom, and Sunday liquor sale, Sunday sale liquor licenses. Wooden Hill Brewing Company will be located at 7421 Bush Lake Road. This will be the first brewer taproom in Edina. As required by Edina City Code, the necessary public hearing notice has been published for this requested liquor license. The City Council must conduct a public hearing for the request. The administration, health, and planning departments have all reviewed the application and are satisfied with their proposal. Sergeant Convoy has no negative findings in the police background investigation. Therefore, staff is recommending that council favorably consider the requested licenses, and we welcome the brewers to Edina. I know both gentlemen are in the audience, if you have questions.
All right, thank you, Ms. Mangan. Are either Sean Ewen or James Ewen here? Gentlemen, would you like to come up and talk a little bit about what you're proposing doing and the build-out of your facility?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Go ahead and introduce yourselves, and give us, give us your business address.
Sure. Our business address is 7421 Bush Lake Road, Edina, in the 55439 zip code.
And you're, which of the Ewens are you?
I'm Sean Ewen.
All right, Sean.
I'm James Ewen.
All right, and you're up from Florida?
Uh, yes.
All right, and you live here, in Bloomington?
Yes.
All right, good. All right, go ahead, tell us a little bit about what you decided to create out on Bush Lake Road.
Yeah, so James is our brewer, and six years ago, he received a homebrewing kit on his 21st birthday from our father and myself, and started making some really great beers, and we really enjoyed sharing them with our community of friends, and enjoyed how people's eyes would really light up, and community would come together over craft beer, and we really wanted to share that with a wider audience. And so, a few years ago, we started planning and researching and trying to find a place where we can, where we could open Wooden Hill, and we ended up finding a home in Edina shortly after the new alcohol ordinances were created and passed to allow such an organization to open in the city. And we started build-out in the summer, completed very recently. It is a production brewery, microbrewery, and we're hoping to open the taproom later this month. James can tell us a little bit about the beers he has planned, starting off?
Yeah, I've been brewing for about five weeks now, getting enough stock, ready to go. We've got a couple IPAs, stout, Kolsch is a German-style lighter beer, a couple Saisons, so trying to deliver a lot of styles.
We're looking forward to uniting the community over craft beer, and we invite everybody out to the taproom.
Good. What's the proposed seating capacity?
It is, our CO has us at 220 for maximum capacity.
Oh, good size. All right, and how much square footage do you have for the brewing part of it?
I think the actual brewery, with the tanks and everything, is around 600 square feet, but the total facility is about 9,000 square feet.
Okay.
So, we have quite a lot of extra space. We actually really only built out about two-thirds of it. We ended up adding on an extra unit a few months after our lease started, became available, so we decided to add in the adjacent unit in case we'd like to expand in the future and to make it a little bit easier to store things and stage our production.
Okay, well, thank you, gentlemen. Other questions from council members?
So, I'm wondering if it was part of your marketing plan or just a coincidence that you're located right down the street from the Public Works Building?
We discovered that shortly after we, we were, actually, I think it was before we signed the lease, actually, because we reached out to Public Works to discuss what was in the water and what they're seeing as far as their water reports. So, we found out very quickly that it was right down the street from us, and we've had a few of those employees reach out to us just to say that they're looking forward to coming in when we're open.
Very good. Member Stewart.
Thank you. I have a question I need to ask, just to make sure I don't need to recuse myself. Are you, is it you and your family that are the owners, or do you have any outside investors?
No, it's, it's just James and I.
Okay, then I don't need to worry about that, thank you.
Member Brindel.
So, I read your story online about where the name Wooden Hill comes from, and I wondered if you're gonna pay tribute to that with any artwork or anything on the inside, because it's a really cool story.
Yeah, and for those of you who haven't heard the story of the name, the term Wooden Hill actually just means staircase, it's another word for a wooden staircase. And there's an old expression, "Up the wooden hill," or "Get up the wooden hill," and something our grandfather said to us when we were much younger, growing up, which means get up and go to bed. And he was a man that community really gathered around him, and we have real fond memories of that, and "Up the wooden hill" really stuck with us. So, in honor of his spirit of bringing community together, we decided to call it Wooden Hill. And so, there's, we incorporated little staircase elements into parts of the design that probably you won't notice until you've been there a few times, or somebody points it out. But if you look at some of the light fixtures and some of the patterns in the space, and even the way that we lay out how words are stacked on top of each other, you'll start to see hints of staircases.
All right, well, this is, stand by, gentlemen, I'll let you sit down for now, but we've got a, this is a public hearing matter, and so is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify in this proceeding? I'm opening it up for public testimony. All right, hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Got a motion and a second to close the public hearing, discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. All right, we've got a, we now need a motion with regard to the brewer taproom and Sunday sale liquor license for Wooden Hill Brewing Company. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion second to approve the issuance of those licenses to Wooden Hill Brewing Company as shown in the motion? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Carried. Gentlemen, thank you for coming to Edina, having the first operation of this type in our city. We welcome you, and make sure you let us all know when your grand opening is gonna take place. All right? Thank you. All right, that concludes our public hearing portion of the agenda this evening. We're gonna move on to reports and recommendations. First matter there is proposed revision to the affordable housing policy that the council asked the Housing Foundation Board to address, and Carrie Teague has this matter.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council, as was directed by the City Council. Over the past several months, the Edina Housing Foundation has been doing some amendments to our affordable housing policy. The way the policy currently stands, it does not address owner-occupied housing, and as a result of the Astell project, and we're starting to hear more and more interest in developing condos in town, we wanted to even out the policy. So, as I mentioned, they've been working on it over the past several months, and the draft is in front of you this evening. You might notice that they took, they took great care to make sure that the affordable units have equal access to some of the amenities within both apartments and condos in regard to parking and some of those amenities provided in condos. But with that, staff and the Edina Housing Foundation are recommending the amendments to the policy as presented this evening.
Questions for Director Teague on the proposed changes? All right, is there a motion to adopt the affordable housing policy as recommended by the Edina Housing Foundation?
So moved.
So moved, second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion?
Yes.
Member Brindel.
You know, I thought I was ready on this, but it, number five, new rental housing will remain affordable for a minimum of 15 years. And then, number six, new for-sale or owner-occupied developments will be, remain affordable for a minimum of 30 years. Why are those different?
That has to do with the financing for apartment complexes. It's tied to the federal law, income tax law. This is, this is where Jeff Huggett is an expert in this regard. So, it's a lot of the deals that he's made, developers have a hard time getting financing for projects that have affordable housing within them. If that term were larger than 15 years, it would be extremely difficult. So, the idea there was they're following that federal tax law, and so that's the difference between the 15 for rental and 30 years for owner-occupied.
All right, so after 15 years, if we want it to remain affordable, what does the developer, what does the building owner have to do?
Well, they can continue to maintain those units at affordable levels. It's really up to.
Okay, so it's nothing we have to do, or?
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Member Staunton.
Carrie, with respect to item number 4A, first thing I'd mention is it looks like there's a parentheses that isn't closed on the end of that, is it at the end of the sentence?
It's either surface or enclosed, and then the parentheses.
Oh, that's where, okay.
Right.
So, if we could pick that up, and then, on the substance of that, did the, did the foundation have any discussion about what does onsite parking mean? Does that mean one space? Does that mean two spaces? Does it?
Yeah, we had a lot of discussion about that, and it might vary from project to project. We didn't want to get too prescriptive in that regard, but.
So, the notion was that, I assume the big-picture notion is, they were trying to measure what affordability is, and if somebody has to pay extra for parking, now, now you're gaming the system on what your monthly rate is.
Right.
Okay, so if parking was available for free through some other mechanism, then you wouldn't have to provide it as a, it's just that they're trying to prevent us from, prevent a landlord from charging extra for parking and not including in the rent.
Right, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member Fisher.
So, I understand the 15 years as part of a, you know, a financing mechanism and some limitations in terms of developers getting their projects financed, but how do we avoid, you know, so we have some good years, like we're having right now, where we're, we're actually accumulating affordable units in our city. So, 15 years from now, I'm assuming there's still gonna be a real big need for affordable housing. How do we avoid not just losing it all in big? How do we avoid not just losing it all in big chunks?
Director Teague?
Yeah, that's a difficult one and that's part of the language that you see and for the owner occupied where the, the foundation has the opportunity to step in and purchase, we couldn't come up with something that addressed that on the renter side, but maybe it's similar language.
So in a way, what we're doing is we're creating a revolving supply of affordable housing. Some's going to go out the back while we're bringing in the front. And everything we can do to purchase our own, to develop our own, to create that is the permanent solution in a sense, unless we can come up with some more creative ideas to, and maybe we need to be working on that now, so 12 to 15 years from now when these units are coming up, maybe we've developed that pool of money where we can then go and subsidize the ones that are already there. Because in a sense, you're going to have people in units that are having kind of subsidized units, they're out there in affordable units. And if one day that just goes away, we're going to have a lot of situations on our hands. So it might be something we have to plan for as a strategy as well.
Member Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along those same lines that 30 years on the purchased or owned units, I think it's probably inevitable that at some point there is a windfall to whoever owns the property at that moment in time. Because then it goes from being under the affordable umbrella to being, just, sky's the limit, right?
That's correct, if the foundation decides to pass on that purchase.
I'm thinking back in time on Oak Glen, when I first got on the council, Gordon Hughes was still the city manager and as I recall, there was a gentleman that owned that Oak Glen Apartments over on Cahill. He lives in Chicago. And he was going to convert them over to market rate. And the city ended up negotiating with him. There were a lot of folks in there that we wanted to make sure the chance to stay there. We ended up negotiating with him in terms of essentially subsidizing that affordable housing, as I remember, with a substantial cash contribution from the HRA or the, or the city. Manager Neal?
Yes, and we've, we've had a similar thing happen just in the last year at Interlochen Park Apartments over on Vernon. So this, that phenomenon, we do see happening. And there might be some, some ways we can kind of get, get in ahead of that and have more constructive discussion and we need to talk about some of those options with the Housing Foundation and with the council.
I think the distinction on Oak Glen was, as I recall, it was when there used to be section, what they called Section Eight Apartments, which don't exist and haven't existed for a long time, those were converted. They came to the end of their life cycle as that type of housing federally subsidized and then he was going to convert them to market rate and we, we got him to keep them affordable by contributing some money to that, to the owner and then having a contract with him in terms of affordability. So that's something we can think about as we move along too. All right, so we've got, we've got a motion, we've got a second on the revisions to the affordable housing policy for the city, dealing with ownership. Is there any further comment or any other questions that always, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Posed? Carried. And now we're on to eight B, which is sketch plan review. And for you students and Boy Scouts in the audience, this is a opportunity for a developer to come in front of the, first the planning commission, then the city council with their ideas on what might possibly happen with some property in town. And in this case, it's this former public works facility right across the railroad tracks by the, where the school bus garage used to be, where they're now building the new apartment buildings. You're going to see the ideas of a company that the city decided to partner with to look at opportunities for both public and private uses on that property. And you're going to hear about their ideas tonight. It's, it's an informal sort of process where we're going to give them our feedback, what we, what we have concerns about, what we like and, but there's no action taken. And then they can go and decide if they want to come back and apply to do the type of project that they're going to show us this evening. So that's a little bit of background on that. So, Director Teague?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this proposal, some of the uses that are included here, a 17-story apartment, potentially condos, multi, multi-unit building, 157 units. There would be a three-story, 27-unit loft arrangement that would be for affordable housing. So they would be providing the affordable housing within this project, but also include 20,000 to 30,000 square foot art center and active adult, the relocation potentially of the senior center. District parking, public space, green and extensive pedestrian connections and the developer will present the detail. The regulatory requirement for this project would be first, a comprehensive plan amendment. This, this area is guided for six stories. Again, the proposal is for 17. What staff would recommend here would be in amending the comprehensive plan, we leave those height required, or the stated height limits within each of the district, but rather build in some flexibility language that would allow the council to approve a project that exceeds those height limits, not only in this district, but citywide through a rezoning or a variance potentially. All of the heights that are reflected in the comprehensive plan have been memorialized in our zoning ordinance. So the comp plan, the purpose of a comp plan is to be the guide for zoning, so we've accomplished that. So, and we can get into more detail on that if the, if a project is applied for here, but that's, that's kind of the approach that staff is thinking. As I've mentioned before, we have this June 30th deadline with the Met Council where they won't consider any comprehensive plan amendments after that date. They would be waiting for us to finish our 2018 update. So a little food for thought on that. So with that, I will introduce Dave Anderson with Fraunshu Companies, who is going to introduce the team and the project.
All right, and Director Teague, did you indicate to Mr. Anderson the time allotted for the applicant presentation?
Yes, in that 15 to 20 minute range.
All right, thank you, Chief. Mr. Anderson, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Dave Anderson with Fraunshu Incorporated, 7101 West 78th Street. We're the developer, development partner working with the city. And Mr. Teague referenced the multiple elements of this plan. We're very excited to walk through those with you tonight. And one thing we'd like to say, just as we kick off tonight, it's really been a collaborative effort, again, working with the city across the board, the engineering department, planning department, parks and recreation, the arts folks and, and through many, many discussions with a variety of folks in the community. We've had a couple of open houses. We had a nice dialogue with planning commission, some, some nice feedback on January 24th. So what we hope to do tonight is walk you through some of the details. We have our design and planning team here tonight. Dean DeVolus is going to lead that. And the remainder of our development team here is available to answer any questions. So we'll jump into it and certainly invite any questions you might have as we walk through the material. So we'll have Dean step up. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening, Dean DeVolus, DJ Architecture, 333 Wash Ave North, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Here to walk through, give the highlights of the Grand View project and sort of go through sort of the aspects of it, get a feel of it. As, as mentioned, this has been truly a joint effort between city staff, city members, arts commission, directors, things like that. So it's actually had a lot of work. But I want to start really with this page, which is the Grand View Guidelines, which is sort of really what guided this project and really went into it. So I'm just going to hit sort of the highlights of this quickly because this is basically the criteria that went into this. Leverage of public owned parcels and civic presence create a vibrant and connected district that serves as a catalyst. Enhance the district economic viability as a neighborhood center with regional connections. Turn perceived barriers and opportunities, and you'll see this as I go through the presentation, designed for the present and the future. Vibrant, rockable, attractive, and so space, organized parking is effective resource for the district. An improved movement within and access adjusted for all people, ages, facility in multiple modes. And finally, create an identity, unique sense of place that incorporates the natural spaces into a high quality and sustainable development. So those are the criteria that was developed over, I guess, sort of, say, the many years that the Grand View's been looked at. And this is really what's been distilled out of that process and worked the neighborhood. So the common themes with this and what this page here talks about, and this is, we had two community meetings that came part of it, on it, what people like to see within it. And this is from the history of our civic building, outdoor space, district parking, bicycle restaurant. And then what Fraunshu HR work of our providing market rate housing, affordable housing, Edina Arts Center, district parking on that. And they're from our two meetings and Bill Nudervag summed this well. He said, there's really three issues that came out of it. One was height, and that was issue of it. Second one is really public, maintaining basis public. But the third was, which is most interesting, is get something going. We moved to our expectation this was going to happen, we've been waiting 10 years and we're still looking at the same site. So that was, and traffic was mixed in there too. So those were the, what I'd say, the common, comments out of it. But they love the trade-off of the open space for the height and I'll go through that. But here's the basic project and the components. And this is a view looking towards the northwest with the apartment and our ownership tower at the north end, the common green, which is acre and a half, and Terry Minchuk will go through that more in detail afterwards. The affordable component called the artist loft over here and then the adult activity center and the art center located in this space. And then the parking is all integrated below this, so all the parking's integrated with it. And the other aspects, such a walkthrough is the, there'll be a direct connection, bicycle pedestrian connection will tie in the jerrys and work across. So the site will be integrated and pulled within the overall area. And then if a vehicle connection comes at a later date, that could be worked within it. So the basic site plan, again, showing those components of the art center, the activity lawn that sits within here, the common space associated with it, the apartment tower, the artist loft housing, parking below that. And then this connection where you see this arrival plaza, a little tie across the edge of the parking ramp and either afford a connection directly into the back of jerrys or continue on across. And if at a future date that this becomes an actual road, this could be the first piece that would allow it. So the idea that this could either work towards the east if the lid is ever developed or work towards the west and connect up to Vernon, Vernon to start creating a district that could run in an east-west basis as well as a north-south basis and making these connections. Basic ideas that the site is very porous, public access, public access, public access, both by vehicle, if we need food trucks in here, by pedestrian, by pedestrian, elevator towers, flex space, housing tower, civic green space, civic facility, facility, affordable housing space has a lot of porosity to it. And again, the major elements of transportation of pedestrian, bicycle, elevator towers, connection, connection to jerrys and so forth. So the idea is make the site very porous, very interconnected within it. Elements of the site, the housing, the affordable housing, the market rate housing, the amenity connection, the flex space, the common park and the art and adult activity center. The other component of it is that the lowest level of this garage is meant to be for commuter parking, park and ride. And the idea is that the art center lobby can be used as a waiting space for the buses coming here, which is a scheduled stop already. So the thought is that we know there's 100 spaces and sorry, they're being used already that parking in Jerry's lot, basically. So the idea is that now we provide structured parking for them. The base of the art center allows that activity to occur and people can wait in a comfort area and there's integration with the art and activity coming through it. And then the basic layout is lowest level, art center, parking, that's really for the district, and then the private park that serves the apartment. Second level, same thing occurs, you start seeing the apartments working here. And then this is the idea where people can park here, work through the art center lobby, have that connection with bus stop below in that location. Third level, same thing, as the art center goes up the hill, because we get the parking. And then finally, the top where you see the various functions, sex place, the amenity, the upper portion of art center that connects directly to park and then the housing here that connects directly to park also. So you also have a full connection on that basis. And then finally, work up the apartment tower or ownership towers, you see the units here. The tower is split, so it has a scale and a sky deck that occurs on the 15th story and then two stories above on the 17th. And this is important because this is a section and this was a tricky site because of how it worked. And we opted to put the tall building at the north end of the site because that's where the most parking stacked is to really solve the issue of the backside of the jerrys and probably put the major feature here, which then allows this all to be south facing space to make the civic park. So instead of a six-story building to fill the whole site, we stacked it to allow this major civic component work in. And then finally, the art and community center at the far south end that has a direct connection, both getting north light and south light. And then the parking, as you can see, is all buried within the hillside. And then this is a section just overlaid, again, showing the same thing, parking below here, the elevation here. And the idea with this site is to make sure that all sides are active. Eden, Arcadia, the future street that may occur here, so the size addressed with units, activity and functions and all that, so that all street faces and the parking is buried within the site. And again, here's a bus drop-off that could work for the park and ride and then the art center, the loft housing here and then the Grand View Tower component that side. And then these are two views. This is a view looking towards the southwest. Again, the Grand View Tower, the connection to Jerry's back here, the arrival plaza, which could become a future street, the units along Arcadia, the art center here in the lawn up in this area. And this is a view looking in the opposite direction from really would be the edge of Our Lady's a Grace, a baseball field that sits in that corner. Again, the idea of public entry, pedestrian, this is over there, stair tower, so if they opted to take the elevator up, they could do that. The Edina Art Center, its lobby, the lawn back this way, again, the housing components, both the loft housing and the tower housing along the idea. The idea is that the site has a very green presence and really is an area that's a lot of asphalt on it. And so it really is to really sort of take the open space or later grace half and really continue connected through and tied into the district. And then these are just more what we call white model views, just showing the various views, again, looking towards the art center, towards northeast, lower view showing its connection approach, tower component. And then the idea that we've lifted up the tower so that you can see through and see that public space beyond it so that it never appears closed off and always connected. Again, this is a view if you come off 100 off the one road. And again, showing this public connection that ties through and again, this future piece of what may be a major road. And this just gives a quick overview so I understand all the aspects of it. Again, entry to the park, entry to the park, Edina Art Center and the housing and retail components that basis around the site. And get underneath this is that reservoir of district park that would support the park, the housing, the community center and the events that occurs here in this area. And then civil, I'm just going to walk through this very quickly. The main idea of this site and what it's good about, because all our parking is covered, we can recycle about 95% of our rainwater. You can't recycle street water very well because salts and oils contaminated because this is all covered with clean roofs or green space. Anything that falls on here can be recycled because it's not being mixed in with road salts, grease, things like that. And so the idea is that we can capture that. We have a deep burst section in here, so it helps filtrate it, use it to maintain the landscape and so forth. And then down here, we have our reservoir, underground tanks if needed. And then down here, we have our reservoir underground tanks if needed with overflow. But the thought is, this is one site that really affords a lot stronger ability to capture and reuse rainwater, because fortunately, when it gets to a surface lot, the contaminations make it much more difficulty. So Terry's here, who's going to walk through the park itself to get more detail then on how it functions. And I'm going to wrap up with a little addendum we put in that just shows some views of how this situates from the distance in terms of the tower. Terry?
Thanks, Dean. Terry Minarch, Confluent Science, Copartix and Planners, 530 North Third Street, Minneapolis, Suite 120. Thanks for having us here today. So I'm going to do a quick overview of the site landscape elements and amenities that we have in the space. As Dean mentioned, we're trying to do a very integral site here, a lot of public access, a lot of public connection, porous on the site on the north side as well as the south, the interconnections between the artist lofts, the tower, and the senior center slash, or active living slash art artist center facility. So as we begin to look at the space and then we break it up, these are some of the precedents. We have a big grade change that occurs here, as you know, with the three levels of parking on the south side. We're really trying to disguise and hide that by not having a series of large switchbacks and big stairs within the element space. So what we've done is kind of a series of terraces that go up through that space, creating a stop space in the middle, which becomes an outdoor learning area, small amphitheater that actually has direct access to the art center off that space as well, so it could become a small gallery, a small painting area as well. And that begins to break up that corner and really kind of identify that corner as kind of a focal point to the development and provides you access to the top park deck. Around the corner of the site, we have a strong pedestrian streetscape and amenity. As Dean mentioned, to the north side, we'll have almost like a woo-nerv pedestrian kind of shared use street that'll allow access that continues onto the deck for service, for activities, for different events that could happen, as well as a drop-off in here and future continuation, east and west in the site. We'll have a full streetscape on this side that accounts for a lot of the direction that's been shown in the Grand View Transportation Plan. I think up to this point where the ramp entry is, is this section right here, and then to the north would be the shared street idea of this section. So we're looking at accommodating that with a lot of planting, pedestrian environment, bike environment, as well as access to the liner townhomes that are on that edge as well. Now, this rooftop amenity space, as Dean mentioned, the height that we're getting from the building provides us the opportunity to create a large community amenity space. It actually creates the only park area within this district to date. Working on a lot of projects within the metro area and in and around the Midwest, I've never done a project like this, so I think it's very unique and very innovative, and I think it'll make this area quite vibrant and quite active. As they mentioned, the tower itself has amenities that can spill onto the space, and then the art center itself will have direct access in a small plaza that actually comes off an entry at this level that can actually spill into the space too. The space could be programmed in a variety of different ways through all seasons, so there'd be a lot of different opportunities, whether that be summer, large, small group, and winter use as well. We want to kind of show you some of these options and ideas, so you know, a daily active use would be just kind of general people gathered on the lawn for a picnic, playing with a frisbee, hanging out with friends, having a lunch. You could do a half-court basketball tournament here, something could be on the lawn. You could do a pickleball or a small event for that on the lawn as well. You could also do a small soccer scale event, you know, for little kids, so the ball doesn't fly too far and hard. You could do a concert event series. You could do a festival-type event, a summer art festival, which would piggyback well with the art center itself, and then a winter market, which we, I think, presented as some ideas previously. As a variety, these are some of the options of things you could see happening within that space, the opportunity to bring in food trucks, the opportunity to have events, the multi-season use, and then the use of the space as it could be throughout the seasons. I'm going to back up a couple shots here to a good perspective Dean had. On this lawn, I think we have the opportunity here with the railway track to create a really interesting buffer. As you notice on the backside of liner homes, we have rooftop amenity spaces here, an upper rooftop amenity here, a lower level deck here for some of the housing units. But in this space, we have a green buffer that kind of begins to create the separation from a circulation pedestrian spine that occurs on top of that. If you take a look at the space in context, if you're wondering about the size, it's about the size of a football field, so it's a very large space that can be broken up into a variety of different uses. We envision a wall along this backside that would be kind of a combination of a green wall slash, you know, activity circulation wall. It could have horizontal rock climbing, it could have projections on it, it could be the backdrop to a concert, it could have a green wall or amenities like that growing on it as well. And I think in one of the renderings earlier, you saw the potential for the top of the art center to be a green roof as well, so that could be used for an art gallery or a variety of different functions and events as well. So that's kind of a quick overview. If you have some questions as you go through the question and answer, we'd be happy to answer them.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. We did a little addendum at the very end of this thing, and what we did was, we took our topo, this project, and inserted into the Google Earth map topo. And the reason for this was, just to sort of get an idea, what would the view of the tower be from various areas around the neighborhood? So just to give you a reference, this is the Grand View condominiums, Opus Development. This is a new Tramal Crow senior structure. This is a Jerry's Tower here. This is our project in this location. So we took a view from this location, a view from the Wells Fargo Bank bank here, one from here, just to say, what is the building, and one from, what does the building look like, as you view it from the distance? So this is from the third floor of the Grand View Square condominiums, looking towards the building, this being the new Tramal Crow development here, the Opus office component here, the Jerry's Tower here, to get an idea how it's, what the neighborhood and how it would present itself within the context. And then this is another view from the building further over. Again, you can see the reference of the Edina Senior Center here, the Opus building, the Tramal Crow building, and then our building in the distance and the Jerry's Tower here, so it sort of says how it sits within the environment. This is a view from the street. This is, again, this is Google Earth, so they come a little funky. This is Wells Fargo right here, to give you an idea, the bank right here. This is the drugstore up here, Jerry's Tower, our building beyond. So I just took a shot from the street, right ahead and opening in the trees, to get an idea what it looked like from the nearest neighborhood that is to the north of the site. View down 100, heading north, to give you a reference, Eden Bridge right here, the future Edina Center right here, there's that element of the hill, the trees coming more full on these Google Earths, but you're more transparent. The Eden 100 building, and then the tower component right here, to give you an idea how it'd sit from a view as you go north on 100. And then this is a view just coming off of Vernon where the Eden comes in, where you make that right turn, Funeral Home in this location, Devani was over here, building distance. Again, just to get an idea how it sort of sit within the context of the site and how it established itself. So we've concluded, so thank you very much, and we're open for questions.
All right. Let me check with Mr. Nundorff first to see if he wanted to address the council, and I think Mr. Fry as well, or if they want us to take, ask questions of the developer
Yes, good evening. Thank you. Bill Nundorff, the city's economic development manager. I'll keep my remarks brief tonight, but as most folks know, this site has been long discussed, long debated, long planned. So in addition to the years of history and discussion that we've had to get to this point, we recently held those two community open houses, thanks to the 100 or so people that came out despite some hearty weather on those couple evenings. The comments that we heard at those open houses, I lump into three main categories. Some residents had concern about the height of the building. It became apparent that some people are very concerned about tall buildings. It was also apparent that other people are not so concerned about tall buildings, as long as there are these other community elements, these other amenities. Several people did mention to us that they thought that that was a reasonable trade-off. The second point that came up at these community open houses was traffic. Everything from the queue of parents dropping off their kids at OLG in the morning, to the people that are at Starbucks waiting to get in, to the traffic getting on the highway in the morning, to the traffic getting off the highway at night, to the confusing arrangement of the parking lot at Jerry's, to questions about safety of walking across the street on some of these busy roads, questions about the safety of bicycling in these existing conditions. So that whole topic of traffic was a very strong concern for a lot of the folks that we met with the last couple of weeks. And then the third main theme that really stood out, quite frankly, was excitement. Excitement that the city might make a decision to move forward on a site that's been vacant for a lot of years now. I think there's definitely fatigue in the community. I think there's an interest in moving forward with something good, with something that really delivers on those seven guiding principles that Mr. DeVola summarized earlier. And those guiding principles are, I believe, well-founded. Those were rooted back in 2008, 2009, when this whole conversation first started. After working with the architect and the Fronchu company, staff feels that we are moving forward in that direction, in a strong footing. But obviously, any great project is difficult, is complicated, makes, requires some big decisions. But that's a quick summary of what we learned at these open houses. And I'll turn it over to Michael Fry, our general manager at the art center, and he can provide a couple remarks as well.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Nundorff. Mr. Fry, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council and city staff, Michael Fry, Edina Art Center General Manager. I just had a few comments, and one of them is, you all know the age of our current art center facility. So the building was built as a private residence back in 1946. The building is almost 75 to 80 years old. It's not ADA compliant, and some of the repairs have been neglected over the years. So this is really an exciting thing for me to see as the Arts Center General Manager, a beautiful building, well-designed, and many of the spaces for a adult active center and an art center are compatible. We have similar clientele, and I think programming would be a very successful venture in this building.
Thank you, Mr. Fry. All right. Member Stewart, would you want to lead off with your?
Sure. Thank you.
Points of inquiry? You want Mr. DeVola's back up?
No, I'll just talk.
Okay.
First of all, let me say, I do find the design innovative, and I particularly like the slope that you've put in there that is inviting to bring people to the green, and I just, I like the concept of having that green space there. I think there are a lot of things to like about the concept overall. So I congratulate you on some nice creativity, and I want you to keep that in mind as I nitpick a little bit here in my additional comments. I also like the plan for rainwater management. I think that's a really great benefit for a whole lot of reasons, but I'd like us to, as a city, whenever we have significant developments going on, always be cognizant of the rainwater management. So I think this is a great way to do that. It's great to reuse the water when we're able to capture it and capture it clean. So I think that's fantastic. Yes, there will need to be traffic studies. I anticipate, since it is very close to the entrances and exits to the highway, that that's not likely to be a huge problem, except I will note that the intersection of Vernon and Interlochen is, I think notoriously recognized by all of us, is one of the worst intersections in our city. I don't know that this does anything to improve that, and it's certainly not the fault of anybody on the development team, but we have to recognize that we may be adding some additional stress at an intersection that's already a difficult intersection for us. So a couple of things, and I'm going to have very few comments about the tall tower, the one that is in many respects, in the end, a private development. And I have, sure, there'll be some concern about height. I also, I don't like surprises late in the game, so I would encourage you not to put coolers or mechanical boxes or elevator boxes on top of those things when the final design comes out. I do like, I think this lower building had a green roof. I think those are great concepts. So, you know, just, I, but I'm not, I've seen this team work before, I'm not too worried about some of those things. Of course, for a tall building, lighting is always an issue too, and we want to make sure that we use, and there's a lot of great technology out there for lighting today, so use, you know, good design and keep the lights somewhat muted and respectful of the neighbors. So a couple of the big issues I have, I feel like there is a trade-off between the civic side of the site and this more private, either apartment or condominium development on the north end. And I want to find a good balance there. I feel that the, and I don't want to call it, you actually had art center on the outside, I don't want to call it an art center. I think this is a civic space that needs to be much more than an art center. Yes, it should be an art center, but we should also have it be, first and foremost, I think, a hub, a hub for community, a hub for transit, a hub to invite people. And I envision, in some ways, a great hall where people would just fill the space and be moving through in many respects, but a place where, especially morning and evening rush hours, if there were some bus transit there, I would dream of one day a rail transit or a trolley car on the tracks at that stage. And I think those things need to be part of that design, to invite people to come into and through the space. And I think that really is such an important piece of it, and I think needs to be an emphasis. In addition to the arts uses, the civics, the civic center uses, I think we, it was called Active Adults by somebody, I think we have called the programming the senior center in the past. I think that's a term we'd like to avoid in the future. But the idea is to be able to fold into this prospective new civic space, the uses that we had, have had at the senior center below the library, as well as the art center. And I think there could be really a fine complementary uses in those space. I went to a meeting of the Edina Historical Society a week or two back, and I should say, on behalf of those nice folks, they would really love to have a little bit of space where they could show off some of the great historical things that the city of Edina, that they have collected on behalf of the city. And then arts could also include, the design that was put in front of us two years ago now, I think, for this same site, where the civic center was on the north side, had, I think, many more square feet than what this space has. And so one of my thoughts is, I'm concerned we haven't put enough size, we don't have enough square footage available in the civic part of this development. Having said, and so I kind of think, in addition to the visual arts, the pottery and the paintings and the other things that have been done always as part of our civic center, the multi-use space that we once had talked about in the other space, where it would be converted potentially into a recital hall, but also into a 200, 250-seat auditorium of some sort, that still strikes me as a really interesting concept and one that we, as a community, might use very effectively. So I don't know if that can be cured by going up a one more story. I don't know what it might take, but I want to invite some creative thought on that. Finally, I forget, well, the concept of let's get going on something, I endorse that concept, but we really only have one shot at this, we want to make sure it's the right thing. And so finally, the, I think what's going to be a linchpin issue in all of this is the cost to the city, and I think we have not yet kicked around any numbers at all. cost to the city, and I think we have not yet kicked around any numbers at all. So, we don't really know what we might be endorsing here in terms of what our civic investment might have to be to achieve these dreams. And so, I'm a little gun-shy when it comes to endorsing things that have a big price tag on them. I want to make sure that we understand what it is we're getting to, and we know what kind of commitment we're talking about on behalf of the city, before we go too far down that path. So, I don't know what it takes to get there, but I think the budget is going to be a vitally important part of this. I think all of the other elements, the programming, the management, all of those things we can address. But we just, we're going to need to have, I think, some more information before too long on some of this. So, Mr. Mayor, those are my comments.
Thank you, Members Stewart. Member Brindle.
Thank you. My overall reaction to this is really very positive. The, if you, looking at the area that is there, just looking at top-down, the amount of green space is very appealing. The flexibility of that is appealing. The sense of place that, and I've kind of organized my comments according to the guiding principles. I have a lot of respect for the process that went on to look at this district, this space, this 3.3 acres in particular, but also the district. And so, with respect to how the guiding principles can be put to use here, thereby copied, and pieces of those being the catalysts that we hope it will be. So, that's how I've organized my comments. So, a connected district, I'm looking for connections in all directions, multimodal connections. There is the connection on the north that goes east-west, and I would look for a similar connection on the south, because that's where your transit riders are. And so, their access to the east, to the west, to get to the retail amenities, the library, et cetera, that's to the south and the west of this area. So, looking at that. Also, looking at the access from the new residents of the Tremel-Crow building to this civic space, making sure that that access is open and available. The civic building on the south, and I will, I mean, all these, all my comments are couched in a similar tone to Member Stewart. We have a lot of numbers to look at and see how they balance out. But if they were to balance out, here's how I feel. I see the civic building on the south being kind of managed in a condo sort of management, where you have public amenities in there, you have private amenities in there. Each complements each other's sort of come-and-stay sort of attractiveness to the area. I was at the University of Minnesota when Nicholson Hall opened. Nicholson Hall is underground, and it's, I think, where I bought my books. I don't know if they're still doing that business there, but it's connected, it's kind of adjacent to the Northrop Auditorium parking, and that's underground. But this beautiful civic space is on, at grade, and that's what this reminds me of, is taking advantage of the height that we can get here to put those two levels of parking and then cover them with that civic space that the university still benefits from today. So, that's what I see here. Affordable housing, I do like the walk-ups. I like those a lot. They're really close to the street, and I don't know how to wrestle that. So, I don't know what the setback is viewed to be currently at those walk-ups, but I would hope that they've got a decent setback from the busyness of Arcadia Avenue. One of the challenges of these businesses is parking. They all have enough space on their property, and some of them park along Arcadia because they don't have enough parking. And I think one of the things that contributes to that, and I've said it before, is the fact that their staff members, their employees, have to park in the same place that their customers park. So, if there can be a sort of arrangement for this public parking, similar to how we manage the 50th, the parking structures at 50th and France, so there's guaranteed parking for staff members of the businesses in the area to open up the parking closest to the businesses for customers. That's probably more for us than you, but it is something I'm thinking about. You know, we've tried to be attractive to Metro Transit as a park-and-ride, and we aren't. We're not dense enough. It's not, I don't know that they're not interested in us. If we were dense enough, if we had enough density, and we had enough transit riders, I think they would be interested in us. So, I think if we turn that around and look at, how do we become interesting enough to Metro Transit to have them take us seriously? And density is the answer to that. That's how we get our transit riders. So, that's, this is one step in that direction. My remaining comments, I think, are the most challenging. Eden Avenue is a very congested street. It is used by people who are trying to get in and out of their Sherwood neighborhood. So, I see the controlled intersection at 53rd Street, which is part of the transportation plan, as part of something that we should collaboratively work on with this project. Should this project go forward, I think it's essential that we look at that. It offloads, I don't know how much traffic it offloads, but I would think it would offload a significant amount of traffic, to give people more direct access to their neighborhood on 53rd Street. Then, looking at the intersection, the entrance to Our Lady of Grace School and Church, and the roundabout that would serve Arcadia Avenue as well as that entrance. It's probably a roundabout that is oval in nature rather than round. There is one that's quite oval and long, kind of an elongated roundabout on York and about 73rd. So, it would be sort of the same idea, but to keep people moving and in a safer intersection. I think pedestrian movement is one of the greatest challenges we have on Eden Avenue. So, I don't know how to solve it. I would like to get people off the street. If I had, you know, if I had all the money in the world and said, "Here's what I want to do with this," I would say, build a pedestrian bridge that gets people across Eden Avenue to and from our public space. But I would like to have us think about, what are the ways to get people across there safely? Drivers in Edina, in some places around Edina, they respect crosswalks, but not all. I think this is an area where we would be hard-pressed to have drivers respect a crosswalk on Eden Avenue. And when we, when this site is developed, if it is developed with amenities such as we're looking at here, it is going to draw people here just to be there, not only to live there, not only to participate in activities there, but just to be there, which is part of the objective of what we want to do with this. So, we have to know, we have to take that, we have to take that increased traffic seriously, and we have to take that pedestrian access seriously. So, those are my comments. I think we're going in the right direction with this. I'm part of the group that says, "Finally, have we really got something finally?" But, you know, Edina does not move quickly. I've learned that. And by the time we get where we're going, we have a product that has been the result of kind of grinding it through and figuring out what we really want, and maybe we've landed on something or come close to it. So, thank you for your efforts. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Member Brindle, Member Staunton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, let me start by kind of taking a step back. We are really fortunate in this community that we have a lot of people who want to invest in the community. And we have had, over, if you even look at the last year, the number of projects that come before us that we're trying to wrestle with, whether we ought to make approvals that are going to create substantial change in our community. And a lot of folks in the community, as they think about that, wonder how we do that. I had somebody ask me, you know, "How do you make a decision about these kinds of things? Is it just up to you? Do you listen to people? What do you do?" And I think it's really important, as we look at this project, to remind people of the history of where we've been, because I think it really informs the direction that we're going right now. We, as a community, if you go back 15, 20 years, there was a long-term effort and recognition that the existing Public Works Building that was on this site needed to be replaced, and that this place wasn't the right place for it anymore, because this place was evolving. And so, there was a really, if you think about it, a pretty creative-for-the-time plan to find somebody who owned property down in a light industrial district, get them to swap a piece of property with us that we could move the Public Works site to, and then they could have our piece of property to develop privately. And we were on the brink of making that happen when a number of people in our community stepped forward and said, "Wait, this is a really key piece of property. We shouldn't let it out of public control until we really understand what we want to accomplish here." And that led us on a really community engagement effort that I think Councilmember Fisher and I, and our colleague at the time on the Planning Commission, came in front of the City Council with a proposal for a public engagement process at the first meeting in December of 2009. So, over nine years ago. And we began a process that has really given us some direction about where to go. The first step of that process was what we call the Guide Plan, and it is what produced the seven guiding principles that you did a nice job of referring to here. And I remember the very first meeting that was held in this room, and we invited people from around the community who came in, and we had a bit of a brainstorming session. And underneath that monitor over there, we had a big purple sticky wall, and people wrote down their ideas for what they wanted to see on this site and put it on that wall. And before tonight, I looked, because I was curious as to what some of those were. And I just want to mention a few of them. Sculpture garden, community garden, green space, open space, urban forest, park, community center, city auditorium, public theater performing arts, farmer's market, city market, town square, kid-friendly area, downtown destination, park-and-ride, transit hub or station, light-rail station, public transportation, plan to accommodate light rail, a greenway from City Hall to the library, pedestrian-friendly, a sense or feeling of community, and planning for the future of adjacent sites, not just this site. And I think that's pretty astounding, that in May of 2010, that's what people were saying they wanted for this site. And now, as we sit here, almost eight years later, many of those things are incorporated into this site. That process led, then, to another really year-long process that produced the Grand View Development Framework. And that also has some passages in it that I just want to, I want to remind us of what it says, because it really informs the direction that we're heading and the lens that I will look at this project through. Right up front in the third page of the document, it talks about the goals of the framework being "to create a place with a unique identity announced by signature elements like, quote, 'a central commons on the Public Works site with indoor and outdoor public space that connects the civic cornerstones of the district and serves the neighborhood and community needs.'" Sounds a lot like what we're seeing here. It also talked about creating a destination companion to the convenience retail on the other side, by saying that "the overarching concept is to support the 'go-to' uses, automobile-oriented, while anticipating more 'stay-at' uses, pedestrian-oriented, and improve the future use and build form around three key civic centers: City Hall, the library, and a community commons that consists of a civic building and green space." So, when people are asking us how we look at a proposal like this, how we partner with Frauncho and think about the direction that we ought to go, I am looking through the lens of this extraordinary community engagement process that we went through. I'll add that the community, that the Grand View Framework was approved by the City Council unanimously in April of 2012. And by the way, a council that three of us did not sit on at the time. It was Councilmember Brindle and the mayor were on that council, but the rest of us were not on the council at the time. The process went on, and if anybody who's interested in really a comprehensive view of the process, Mr. Newendorf made a great presentation to the Planning Commission in January that is on the website under the Grand View site, that really takes you through in much more excruciating detail than I am doing here, all the planning efforts over the last 10 years. And it's really, I think, an edifying experience for anybody who wants to understand what we've been going through to arrive at this moment. And it included a transportation study in 2015 and 16, and many of the comments that have been made about the pedestrian-oriented nature, whether it be Eden Avenue or Arcadia, are right there in the study. And I commend you for including those. You've included the cross-sections, and I think we have a really nice recipe for how we're going to proceed by looking at those documents. So, with that, I'd like to just talk a little bit about, let me, before I get to that, let me just, one comment about the community center. In addition to the fact that the framework and the guide process talked about a community center on this spot, and I think Councilmember Stewart is right, we ought to be talking about it as a community center. It may include other, these really important components, like the art center, like an adult activity center and others. But if you think about it, it really, it is consistent with one of the strategic anchors that we've identified as a council, that we are looking to foster a more engaged and inclusive community. And we have never really, we've always had kind of a quasi-community center with the school district, but as they have gone forward and converted that community center into a more essential part of the services they deliver as a school district, we have less and less of what we call a community center. And so, I think this is consistent with that strategic anchor. It's also consistent with something that I've talked about over the years, which is this notion of one front door. You know, we have such a fractured delivery system, whether you're talking about the school district, or the city's park program, or the Rotary, or the Chamber of Commerce, or the Community Foundation. All of these different organizations are delivering great programming, services, community-building activities, but we spread them out and we fracture them so dramatically that it's very difficult for people to follow where they're going to be. And I think it's, this provides us a brick-and-mortar component that can be paired with a virtual component, to really bring us that hub, I think, that somebody earlier referred to, our centerpiece of a community center, a one place that people know where to go to find out what's happening and find out things they can be engaged in. So, with that preface, let me just talk about some of the specifics of the project. I think at this, at this stage, we're in a kind of a unique situation, because unlike a typical land-use approval process, we're a partner in this. We own this property, and so, we wear the hat of land-use regulator, but we also wear the hat of owner of the property trying to develop it. And so, we're going to have a business deal to discuss, and as my colleagues before me have talked about, you know, we have to figure that out. So, what I, the way I... So, what I, the way I think of it now is, does the site have the right components in the right locations? We can figure out the precise mix, you know, how high the building has to be, how much space in the community center, et cetera, as we start to do the business deal. That's going to have to be hand-in-hand with that to figure out what's the right answer. So, a few things to think about in that. Affordable housing, I think this is a really good start on that process. I would encourage you to think about affordable housing, both in terms of complying with our policy, which I think your initial stab at it does, but also in a less binary way. So, there's been, there's some discussion in the community about affordable housing, I think, means different things to different people. Yes, there's the technical Metropolitan Council definition, or the federal tax credit definition of, you know, 50% or 60% of average median income. But there's also something that's been referred sometimes to as the missing middle. So, and what might be 120% of AMI, or 140% of AMI. People that have a modest home in the community and want to move out of that home, but want to be into a place that they feel like they can afford, even if it doesn't meet the technical definition of affordable housing. And so, I'd ask you to explore, as we move forward, how much of that market-rate tower could be this missing-middle housing? And I think there's some opportunities as you do that, both from a size perspective of the units, as well as the ones that are nearer to the railroad tracks or other things. I'd ask you to think about that. I'm sure that the ones up at the top are going to be, you know, very marketable, and people will be willing to pay a higher price for that. But as we're at the lower floors, maybe we can hit that missing middle. Pedestrian connections. I talked a little bit about, I think the transportation study really gives us a good roadmap on that, as to what we want the character of Arcadia to be, what we want Eden to be. We've got a very heartfelt email a week or so ago about somebody's experience trying to get along Eden Avenue and, on a wheelchair and tipping over into the roadway. And, you know, that's the kind of stuff that we just have to fix. And we've had people from the Grand View Square community come forward as part of the Trammell-Crowe project and say, "We love the project. Help us get across the street safely." So, we've got to do that as we're moving forward. Maybe it's reaching out to OLG and seeing what their circulation is like. It's always struck me that it makes more sense to enter from the frontage road than from Eden. That could take some pressure off of it. There's a lot of potential solutions there. So, then I get to the Central Plaza, and there's a number of things I want to think about on that. First of all, I want to make sure that whatever we're doing on that Central Plaza is connected to both the residential tower and the community center. And it has to be the kind of thing that reaches out from both sides. And I think it's really critical that it have some hospitality service. And what I mean by that, maybe it's a restaurant, but it has to be, people gravitate to eating and drinking. All you have to do is look at Town Hall Station, the Hilltop, heck, Jerry's Starbucks, you know, it's a sheet of glass on a, looking out on a parking lot, and it's filled all day long with a robust intergenerational, multi-generational group of people using it. That's the kind of vibe we want on this green space. The backdrop wall notion is terrific. I think that's a really cool idea, and it simultaneously masks the, or screens the railroad tracks, but also starts to frame up a place. And it's looking outward, so you still get that great view. The perimeter feature is good, where you could come in with food trucks or other vehicles that can then populate it, if you had a farmer's market, if you had some kind of festival. You know, we ought to build the roof of that parking garage that the plaza is on, thinking about all of the infrastructure we need. If there's sewer water, if there's electricity hookups, if there's going to be food trucks up there and they have to be running their engine, is there a way to take that exhaust away so that it's not right in that place? Can we make it convertible to temporary or semi-temporary structures? Some of the things that Mr. Menerek showed had kind of setups of, if you think of an art fair with kind of booths and other structures. I think we need to be in a position to have that plaza evolve as the demand and as the surrounding district evolves. The access to it has to be robust. I love the two entrances on the north side. The bridge across the railroad tracks is critical because it not only permits folks to come from that west side across the tracks to utilize this, but also, you know, think about the folks in the apartment building going to Jerry's. They go right across and they can get their groceries and walk back. As well as Walgreens, or the hardware store, all those convenience retailer are now available to those folks. Then finally, I guess I would note, the framework also talks about making this a real model of sustainability. And I like, Mr. DeVolus, your notion about stormwater, but I'd ask you to think even bigger than that. Think about, you know, what are we doing about solid waste? What are we doing about power consumption? What kinds of things can we do to really, you know, raise the bar and set the tone for this district in terms of sustainability? So, I'm really positive about it. I think we have a really good start. We have, obviously, the mix needs to be considered as we go through and try to do the business deal. But I think we're in a really good place, and we've made a really good start. So, I'm pleased with what I've seen.
Great. Thanks, Member Staunton.
Member Fisher? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See if I can read through my notes here. So, first of all, I just want to, you know, Councilmember Staunton did a really nice job sort of highlighting, starting right from the guiding principles. And I just want to say, I think you did a great job. I can tell you not only put them in your presentation, but you actually paid attention to them, that you designed to the guiding principles. And it's very evident to me. I think, when we think about height, and I'm just going to jump right to height, we've seen at least, what, a half dozen concepts, maybe more, for this site over the last many years. And this is the best by light years. It's just so much better than anything we've seen. And I believe the reason is the height. We allowed, we haven't allowed anything yet. You have taken height, and the ramification of height on one spot on this site is an active site with a lot of green space. In other words, it's that give-to-get, you know, we're getting something here with the height. And I would argue that there were people, as we did all that planning, that didn't imagine that kind of height here, but they imagined every other aspect. And what I think we've learned through all of these concepts that we've seen is to get a lot of these things we're talking about, we actually have to go vertical to get the kind of active ground plane that is going to be essential for this place to be successful, for it to be a place that you would come and stay and spend time. So, that, I think, is a really important point with where this goes. Just want to make a few comments about, again, Councilmember Staunton kind of set this up very nicely, this evolution from the guidelines to the framework to the transportation plan. If you go back to the guideline, or to the framework, when we were all doing design schemes and in a planning sense, we imagined this public space, both building and green space, we always showed it on the north or northwest corner of this site. And we always imagined housing being on the south side of the site because we thought we could get more height on the south side. And I think we let it really drive a lot of our decisions. It wasn't until the transportation plan where the realization came that if we put the public building on the north, which is also the transit hub, we're driving buses into this site. We're creating way more traffic than we need to create here. So, it was the first time we started thinking of flipping that. And I think what you've laid out here, you've grasped that and taken it well beyond. And I think, when I imagine this, this public building component and the idea of what you've talked about, you know, it's a transit component as well, that's really critical here. And if you think about, what a great multi-use, you know, or function for a building, to have art, to have seniors' activities, but it's also a place where the community comes to move and come from other places. It's a natural. And someday, if there's ever rail transit, it works in that location as well. So, I think that's a really strong component. I think, is, can someone bring up the image, just sort of an exonometric, or? I always do better when I'm looking at pictures. But just maybe something that you're looking at it from the southeast, sort of from the OLG view. There you go. So, I think the other thing that was really, is really a breakthrough element in this current idea, is that in all the planning that's been done, and all of the concepts we've seen, the first sort of urban design solution, and I think we're all guilty of it as architects, is that we want to bring buildings up to the corner, right? That's what you do. This is great design. And normally it is, right? Because you're trying to make that a great place to walk and for pedestrians, and we think of the pedestrians on the sidewalks. I actually think this is the biggest breakthrough of this concept, is that you're taking, in every one of those schemes, whatever green space was left from mostly building was hidden behind, right? No one was ever going to know that it was back there. This breaking the mold of taking the building away from the corner and bringing the park to the corner, I think is really a breakthrough idea here. And kudos to that. And I would say that everyone will know there's a park. And I would say, it feels like it's a public park, which I think it needs to, right? For this to be successful, it can't feel like I'm tiptoeing up to a private development. It's got to be everyone's park. And so, I think, there were some comments at the Planning Commission about also the art center, that that felt like it was a back door. I couldn't disagree more. I think this is as front a door as you can have for our public building, whatever those components are. And I would, and maybe it's just my perspective, I think one of the commissioners that made that comment comes from the north more than from the south. I live in the Cornelia neighborhood. I'm driving north on 100. This is gateway, right here, right? That art center is going to be front and center, from the highway. So, I really like those components in those configurations. Talk about stormwater management. I think more and more, stormwater management is going to become the critical element that we deal with on almost every project. And we talk about this, the big plan that we're working on right now. This is important stuff. And I think this is a good, we have to set the tone on the property that we control. And we control this property today, and we have to, I think it's a really great starting point that I'm seeing in terms of how we can manage stormwater. And not, we can't just manage it, we have to make it better on every site that we're redeveloping in this city. That's the only way we're going to improve our situation for the whole. So, I think that's, we're heading in a good direction there. I do like the parking entrance locations. Those have varied in numerous schemes that we've looked at over time, and I think these make sense, and I think will work well. And frankly, the way the site, you know, you've somehow managed to separate, you know, the private parking under the housing on the north with the big public parking field, you've still made it functional for the art center. And it's a much more difficult puzzle than I think we think. I've been looking at these designs all the way along, and I look at it, you know, I'm an architect, so I'm really looking at the puzzle that is this site. And it is a difficult puzzle. And magically, I don't know quite how you did it, but you somehow have, in this iteration at least, pieced that together, and I think it's really well done. I do really like the very open access from the new east-west street on the north side, the ability to get vehicles in, to do whatever on that surface park, I think works really well. I also like the whole wall, the planted wall, the potential for that, I think, works well. So, those are all my fairly, you know, positive takes on this, and there's certainly a lot of them. A couple of the comments that I would leave with you to think about, and I'm not going to get into any of the kind of HRA discussions about how we pay for any of this. I'm strictly looking at how this site is organized. So, the affordable housing, I think I would, I agree with the comments that Councilmember Staunton had on that housing and thinking about, and I would just, I would say, there might be some really nice market-rate activity that wants to happen on this lower building. And I wouldn't necessarily say, "That's the affordable, and up there is not the affordable." I think there might be a potential to blend that a little more and just, you know, it's housing, and some of it's going to be more affordable, and some of it's going to be less. And I'm not sure I would just say, "It's got to be in that building." And that could be ongoing discussions, but it's just sort of a thought. But as it relates to the housing that lines the park and is along the street, it's a little hard to tell in all of these drawings, but it appears that they're primarily, do you only access them from the back, or can you get to them from the sidewalk, from the front as well?
The lowest level works both ways. Level two, because, you know, the hillside, that's only from the back. When you get to the top, then I'll have access back from, access towards the park. So, it's a mix because of the grades of the site. So, it's a little bit of all the above.
So, I assume that you could, there's sort of that frontage on the sidewalk, which is really a good thing for the feeling you have when you're walking up the sidewalk.
Exactly. And that's the idea that we've held these back. And if we can get, and you know, one open issue, which I think you picked up from the Planning Commission, is a 10-foot easement.
Right.
That's undecided. And if that falls in our favor, we'll take the little project and push it 10 feet further west to open us up further. So, we're trying to work through those issues. The more we get to define, the more we develop these front stoops, little yards, and aspects to the loft units as part of this project.
Okay. The other thing that, it's not clear to me, but I'm wondering if you couldn't do some interlocking kind of design where the housing, so right now, I sense that there's some higher, upper levels of the housing looking down on the park, but it's not, you don't have that sort of stoop down to the park kind of opportunity. It feels like you could.
Yeah, it's, once we look at the grades and see how it flips on the other side, you know, we'll look at how that backside can operate in the third floor. It'll still have to connect because we need to connect to the two fire stairs here and here. And they'll still only be to quarter, but the hope is that third floor can connect out this way. And the idea is that we took these third-floor units and added a loft piece to it, as you can see right here. So, the idea is that that roof terrace becomes part of the living environment so that some of these units have views, some have views in connection to the park. So, that's part of the play.
And I think, keeping that is great, but it feels like, is it Jenga? What's the game where you have the interlocking?
Yeah.
I picture this interlocking piece where you have stoops to the sidewalk on this level and stoops to the green up here, and you can still have a roof thing up here. And it might make it go up one level higher, but it'd be fine.
Yeah, no big deal, yeah.
But I think the opportunity to have people sitting on their front porch.
Overlooking the green.
Experiencing the green.
Correct.
Not only would that be a phenomenal thing for the people living there, but it would create even more of a comfortable and inviting feeling on the green. So, just something to, as we move this forward, something to think about. And let's see, I'm just about done. I think the comment that was made about interlocking and vernon is, that intersection is absolutely, you know, it's a concern, but I think that's going to have to be solved over there. I don't think we can, yeah. I think this whole issue of district parking, today I was having lunch at Hilltop, and I actually parked on the street about where the entrance to this parking would be. And the whole time, I was just sort of imagining what that would feel like. And you know what? It feels kind of good. It feels, if you had a sidewalk on the, you know, actually, both sides of the street, it's not a distance, right, to get over to Hilltop, to get to other businesses. And the reason that's so important is, and I think the thing we have to think about with this parking is, this parking isn't for what's happening on this site. I mean, it is, but it's district parking. It has to be. And it has to, it's going to, I think we have to be careful when we get into looking at this, we have to be really deliberate about thinking about, we're not going to pay for it all from this site either. It's going to have to be from a district-wide plan. And so, that's why it's so critical, you know, where are the entrances? How do people move? And what I'm seeing right now, I And, and I, what I'm seeing right now, I think it, it'll work well. And then the transportation issues that have come up consistently, they're real, they're there. But I actually think these projects are what's going to help solve those. We can't build all that stuff out until we get some of these sites developed. It's in a TIF district for a reason, right? We created a TIF district to help pay for the transportation infrastructure. So it's, it's kind of a chicken and egg thing, and I think we have to, I don't know, we need the chickens, we need the eggs? We need one of them, so we can do the other one, right? So I guess my last comment would, is, is I look at projects, I always try to think, are we creating a better community if, if this project happens? And in this case, I look at this, and like, I see at least three new locations for prom pictures, right? And, and sometimes I think that's the way we have to measure the quality of what we're building. Are we creating spaces that people will want to come to because it's just that cool? That you have to have a picture. You have to have a selfie, you have to have your prom picture there. And, you know, it's too late for me, but for some parent in the future that doesn't have to drive down to the river in Minneapolis for prom pictures, this will be appreciated.
Principal number eight.
So that's it. Thank you.
You know, we've talked a lot about, the time it's taken us to get some things done here, and one of the principles I think Mr. Nundorf mentioned was, let's, let's, let's get something done here. And it always causes me to hearken back to our resident Kurt Johnson's comment about Minnesotans being really great at admiring the problem and admiring the challenge. But I'm really, in a way, grateful that we had the chance to admire this challenge for this period of time, because I think getting the school bus garage site set first, which I don't think any of us ever imagined would sequence that way, has helped us move to this project in a, in a little easier fashion. My colleagues have done, I think, a beautiful job of talking about some of the elements of this area that, that are critically important in this, in this, elements of this project to, to address. And I can get into some of the specifics as well, and I think Member Fisher just made a great point about the transportation system improvements that are embodied in that transportation study from 2015 and 2016, that those have to kind of move in lockstep with whatever we decide we're going to do here. Because clearly, that, 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 those transportation system challenges are, that need to be solved in conjunction with anything that we do here. If I step back and think about, you know, and I think you have caused me to think about it in this way because of the way you've done your design work, your whole team, the ascendancy of that, those staircases off of Eden and Arcadia reminds me a little bit of the staircase at Saqra Cour in Paris. With all, but that doesn't have any greenery, of course, but you, you have the same sort of feeling. There's some, there's some wonderful human sense that, that happens to you as you ascend those stairs to, in this, in this situation, a green place. You're not going to be in front of a, a, a beautiful white Catholic church when you get to the top of the stairs here, but like you are at Saqra Cour. But this has its own special sort of place, and I think it could be a beautiful spot for, along the way, as you move up to the, to the field area, beautiful pods or places for public art. And I, and I think that just needs to be part and parcel of what we're doing here, thinking about this being at least partially an art and culture center. So in this area of potential development, and we've been talking about it in a little broader way, about it being our, our city center, our central park, and all these different civic elements that kind of, they kind of breach across, breach isn't a good word, but they kind of elevate across Highway 100 and connect these, these civic areas. And other folks have mentioned that before. We have a chance here to kind of speak to the whole character of our community. And I think part of the work that you've done has made me think about it in this fashion too, that if we can speak to the character of our community as a people through design and through the, the things that we construct, we can have this project reflect those traits and virtues of people in Edina. The, and I just jotted a few of them down here as I was thinking about it, as other folks were talking. The integrity of the people in our community, the respect for tradition, you know, the, the admiration of graceful design, the appreciation of innovation, because tradition and innovation aren't mutually exclusive, they can coexist. And then, then, then the warmth that not only buildings and materials can create, but, but the form and how the land is used, and then the landscaping itself to Mr. Menaric, what he was talking about there. So I'm really grateful for the partnership that we've had. As I was sitting here, I was thinking about this tribute I heard Mortensen this past winter from our community and Mortensen Construction. And one of the things that he always says is that the ability to accomplish great things is virtually unlimited when people work together as a team, when people work together as a team. And so we've had this, we've had a public team, and we've had a private team that's been working together as a singular team. And, and the result, at least on a preliminary basis, is you folks coming forward with an idea like this that embodies the framework, it keeps, it stays true to the character of what was originally anticipated here by the, the folks that worked on this, including the two people to my right, where the plan was to have it be two-thirds public, one-third private. And you've roughly been able to, to meet those requirements, along with the things that everybody else has talked about here. So fiscal responsibilities, I mentioned, that's going to be part and parcel of everything we do as we look at this, no matter how much we love it. The, I like the idea of this wall, and I think of it with, I think it's called the New American Symphony down, it's a Frank Gehry building down in Miami Beach. Part of the face of that building is used as an outdoor theater, and there's a park right there. People go over to Lincoln Road and buy popcorn and pizza, bring their chair over and sit down, and they watch an outdoor movie. And it's just a tremendous civic gathering. I, I think it's a wonderful thing for people to be able to do. So I like the way you're thinking on some of, some of those more refined elements of this whole thing. Other quick thoughts, the, we talked about transportation improvements. Affordable housing, I, I remember Fisher and Member Staunton talked about this a little bit, but I love the concept of those row houses going up the street, the fact that that's a, that's an affordable sort of element of the project. I don't like the idea that, as someone in the Planning Commission mentioned, that there's only windows on one side, and I think you affirmed that. We, we got to figure that out. You know, people need light, especially in the climate that we live in. We got to, we got to figure out how to make that better. And I really like Member Fisher's idea of somehow engaging the back of those buildings more onto the, the green space, so that, that can be enjoyed by that part of the neighborhood just as part of the way they live. Height for me, I think there's, there's context here. That is something I think that we've talked about as council members amongst each other, about how we're going to start talking about height and density in appropriate places. How do we maintain the character, overall character of our town as we become maybe more like a hybrid? We don't want to be downtown. We're never going to be downtown. It's just not something that, that we desire. We like Edina for what it is, primary emphasis on single-family homes, but there are places in our community where a little height and a little density can help support this, this city that we all own together. And it can help defray some of those costs away from single-family homeowners when you've got some density, and make sure that we keep our city up to the standards that we're accustomed to here. And it's not inexpensive owning this, this city together. So this, this constant ability that we have to have, I mean, the, the privilege, I guess, of having people come to our town to say they want to do things here is really something that we need to embrace when it's appropriate. So this may be one of those circumstances. Again, I know that you're thinking about this, planning for transit. Member Stewart mentioned that, especially I think for light rail. You know, Edina's always been a forward-thinking city. It might not happen, probably won't happen during the time any of us are serving in this council, but we've got to think about the future there as well. Walkability around Grandview, Member Brindle mentioned that, we got to create the walkability for people from Grandview Square to get over to places like Jerry's safely. And I think this is a great way to, what you've come up with so far is a great way to honor the work of our residents and the framework itself and what's gone before with the efforts of so many residents. And I think that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to say it's been a great partnership between the city, staff, Franchu, and the committee to make this happen. So really, credit goes all the way around. It's not just our invention, it's really everyone's invention that's starting to make this reality. So thank you.
Yep, all right, thanks. I hope all that was helpful. And thanks, Mr. Frye, for coming in this evening. And we need to have a conversation sometime, yeah? A breakfast meeting or something with some of your folks, I think. Mr. Nundorf? Mr. Stevens, thank you. All right. The next thing we have in front of us is the 69th Street access improvements update from Director Milner.
Mayor, Mayor of the Council, just wanted to give an update on a, on a project we're working on in 69th Street. So this was in an agreement between the city and Simon Properties related to the France Avenue sidewalk easements from the project we did in 2013 to provide a left-turn lane from eastbound 69th Street into the Southdale Mall near the AMC Theater, and I'll show you a graphic of that, just east of the Restoration Hardware site. In my opinion, it's not ideal to do just a spot project right here at this intersection, but it was a promise to Simon Properties, and we want to follow through with that prom, with that promise. Ideally, we'd love to reconstruct France Avenue all the way between France and York, or 69th Street between France and York, but we just don't have the funding available right now. In the CIP last time, we included a project to start to look at this, and that was number 17-011. And we are starting to work on some designs. This is a municipal state aid street, so we got to meet those guidelines for this facility. So I'll show you three options and then talk a little bit about traffic. So this is the location. When you're traveling eastbound on 69th Street, you cannot make a left turn at this intersection heading north into the mall properties. So the promise was to create some kind of access here, and the original thought was a, a left-turn lane. And when this option came up, we were going to lose some mature trees down the center of that median. And with the width of that intersection, in our opinion, we're actually making this less safe with this facility for people trying to cross, cross that wide intersection. So the second option we looked at was still allow those left turns in each direction, but restrict other movements. So you could, it would be a right-in, right-out for each of the Galleria on the south and the Mall on the north. And again, we didn't think this would be appealing to those property owners. So the third option, and the one we're, we're moving forward at this point, is a roundabout. So you can see, here's the, the concept where we have it today. There'd be an additional pedestrian crossing there on the west side of the roundabout. We'd have some little bit of work to do on each the Galleria and Simon Properties. We have met with each of those property owners, and they support this idea. We're working with them to get some easements there to construct those things. The sidewalk on the north side, that was part of the approvals for the Restoration Hardware work. So our hope is that we get this in before they're ready to build that sidewalk on the north side. Looking out a little further, if you recall, the water treatment number five is located just north of the water tower, and right at 69th and France circled there in that green circle is that wellhouse. And we're going to be doing some work down in that location, so we feel we could construct a new curb line all the way from France Avenue into that roundabout. So this roundabout is a one-lane roundabout. Currently, there's two lanes in each direction, so we have to funnel the traffic down in the one lane into the roundabout. And then as you leave it heading eastbound, you'll be back two lanes, and a similar transition will occur when you're heading westbound. You'll be funneled in the one lane. When you exit the roundabout, you'll be in two lanes again. When we come back to reconstruct 69th Street between France and York, then we'll go back to a one-lane facility in each direction. The dimension of this one is 134 feet, the diameter of it. It's, it's larger than some of the other ones we've done just because of the tip, the street section that's out there today. This is similar to the what we're doing, what is out on 70th Street. Those are a little smaller in diameter, and the one on Valley View Road is 124 feet. We did have Chuck Rickert with WSB look at the traffic impacts. So the existing average daily traffic is just over 10,000 vehicles per day. This will improve those operations because it's going to have some increased access points for those properties. The 2040 projections, including the projects we're aware of, and also some of the projects we think are coming in the future, with some growth projections, we're looking at a traffic volume for 12,500 vehicles per day, and that is below the capacity of a typical two-lane roadway. So there's a level of service, both in the existing condition today of an A, and the proposed condition will be an A in 2040.
Jan, I have a question about that. If you would go back to that. So your comment is that when, when 69th Street is reconstructed, it would be reconstructed to one lane?
Yep. The traffic volume show, we don't need two lanes in each direction. We would rather use that space to improve the pedestrian facilities. Large sidewalks, dedicated bike lanes or protected bike lanes, whichever we feel is most appropriate along that section.
So with 12,500 vehicles per day, capacity of a two-lane is 15,000. You don't think that 12,500 vehicles needs two lanes?
No. Capacity of a, of a, when it says two lanes, it means one lane in each direction.
Oh, it does?
It's, it's not two lanes in one direction.
I see. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
Clarify that.
Thank you.
So four lanes, it would be 30,000.
Okay.
Would you go back to your, would you go back to your drawing? Were you done?
Nope, I had a little bit of budget and schedule.
Okay, go ahead, finish up, and I'll take you back later.
Okay. So included in the CIP project number, we had a budget for just the left turn, because that's what we thought we're doing, for 200,000. In my opinion, I'd rather, if we're going to do something, let's do it right, what we think should be the long-term solution here. It's a more expensive solution. As you can see, the estimated construction's 480,000, and with some engineering and construction management, it's up near that 580. So we have Centennial Lake TIF funds covering that 200,000, and then we can make up the remaining with some of our MSA funds, because it is on that network. Use some pedestrian cyclist safety funds for the sidewalk facilities and the, and the crossing, and then also storm sewer for the curb lines. Schedule, we're looking to get approval from the state aid office here in February, early March, call for bids and award in April. We've met with Galleria and Simon. Galleria has the flower show in April this year, and they would prefer that we don't start before May 1st, so we're thinking a two-month construction would occur between May 1st and July 1st. And I'm in front of you just to make sure, we should continue on with, with this project, continue to fulfill that promise we had with Simon Properties, and then I can stand for, for any questions.
Sure. I have somebody, let me go to council members first. Anybody have a question or comment with regard to this proposed project? Member Staunton?
No.
Oh. So, yeah, this is a good one to have up here. Or the photograph you had actually is, is even better, I think, to illustrate the, the medians, the boulevards, whatever you prefer to call them. Or is that, is that the end there?
This one?
Right there.
Yeah.
You know, these, when you think about it, and my office is over there, these are beautifully wide medians, and they're, but they're almost invisible. And they're invisible because there's nothing on them but green grass and a, and a spare tree every once in a while. These, if we're going to do this and do it right, my notion would be that we should, we should take the opportunity to landscape this as extensively as we can, superior to what we did on, on France Avenue, frankly, because I think that could have been beefed up more than it was. It could have been even better. So that would be my suggestion, that in that budget, you make sure that you, you maximize the landscaping plan as well.
I can comment, we are definitely, I didn't, I didn't mention it. So we're going to landscape the middle of that median or the middle of the roundabout, similar to some of the other roundabouts we have in town on Valley View. You see the colors during various times of the year with those. We are landscaping the centers, and then we've talked to Galleria and Southdale that they can, they're going to get some additional green space, especially Galleria, and they're more than welcome to add to their landscaping that's in, within their areas on that side of the street.
But I mean the long strips that run towards France and run towards York, those should be redone too.
Yep. And you can see our budget dollars are already stretched. You know, if we want to consider further landscaping, this is a CIP year, we could look at where we could find some dollars to do that. I think with this project, it'd be difficult to landscape that entire corridor, but we can look for, add a project to the CIP this year.
Is this our road or the county's road?
It is our facility.
Okay.
But it's an MSA.
It's municipal state aid. We have to meet those standards.
Yep. I was just thinking about potential additional sources of funding for landscaping dollars, because I, I just think this is a great opportunity we don't want to miss out on.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just jump in and piggyback on that. One of the notions that occurred to me, if you look on the very right-hand side of this screen, there's a, there's a crossing, a pedestrian crossing there. And, and I think one of the challenges of this site, and as it evolves, is, is making it more pedestrian-friendly and, and striking a better balance between automobiles and pedestrians. And, and I do think one of the great things about having a single-lane roundabout is now you're pinching down, you're signaling to drivers to kind of slow. is now you're pinching down, you're signaling to drivers to kind of slow and start looking for other things as they're getting there. And I really echo the mayor's comments. I mean, some of this is psychological with drivers. The more we can create a canopy and a feeling like you're in that canopy, I think it has an impact on the way people drive. Whereas when they're out and they see mostly concrete and mostly curb, they tend to open it up and go faster to get from here to there. So I get that we've got budget issues, and we'll have to work within those constraints. But anything we can do to take advantage of this opportunity to kind of create a different vibe along 69th Street would be great.
I think the traffic speed, for sure, just having that facility. And then you notice the crossings that we're going to create are only one lane each side, much shorter, safer compared to the one you pointed out, where it's four lanes across.
Member Fisher?
I agree completely about the enhanced landscaping, but if I'm hearing you right, this is sort of a, we've got the budget, we're going to fix this intersection, but the real play on 69th is to make, to take out some lanes of vehicular traffic and put in better pedestrian and bike movements. And it seems to me that before we spend a bunch of money and up the landscape, and then come in and start doing all of that, we might want to think about budgeting it as part of the longer-term solution on 69th. You know, maybe there's some simple things we can do, but I think that's when we really nail the whole corridor in terms of landscaping. I agree with you. I think it could be a just a phenomenal corridor.
Yeah, thank you. Member Brindle?
Just one more thing. The crosswalk that Member Staunton pointed out on the right side of this graphic, I think, is the promenade. It's the north, north part of the promenade coming from under the Galleria, is it not?
It's coming right by the Gabbert's, where you pick up furniture. They're, that's the crossway right by, this is Gabbert's right in the corner here.
So I'm wondering, I guess...
No.
That's Big Bull.
Yeah. But...
No, I don't think so. I think Big Bull's down at the other end. It's, this is, everybody's got an opinion.
If you look at this version, that's Big Bull there.
Yeah.
This is Gabbert's. He's right.
So I guess I thought that was the easement that went underneath at the Galleria.
It might be part of it.
I think that's too far west. That easement's further to the east.
Is it?
It's kind of between this crossing and the one that's at Southdale Mall.
Okay.
There's no crossing right at that easement.
You can kind of see it right on the far east side of this.
Okay. It is the promenade?
Got it on Google Maps.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
So, I mean, that leads right into the landscaping comment, to continue the landscaping of the promenade.
That is.
But anyway, just a comment.
All right. Well, thanks for the update. Any other questions, comments? Council member?
Do we need to give?
No action required.
There's no action? We're just, okay. We're not telling you to stop.
Sounds good. We'll be back for an award in a few months. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have our typical resolution regarding grants and donations. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2018-16?
Still moved.
Got a motion second to adopt Resolution 2018-16, accepting donations on behalf of the City of Edina. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the resolutions, aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried? We've got some donations this reporting period to the Park and Rec Department for the golf course. And the residents that donated, year-end donations, their names will be on the website. Thank you to those residents that donated to the golf course. And that concludes that portion of the agenda, and we will move on to correspondence of petitions. Manager Neal, anything that has come in during the meeting?
Nope. Nothing more.
Okay. All right. Aviation noise update, anything there? Member Brindle?
No. We had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and just, and then I'm sure that the Metropolitan Airports Commission is celebrating successful in and out on a great Super Bowl here in Minneapolis. I think Minnesota represented itself very well, beginning and ending with the airport for a lot of people. So we did talk about that, and it was an interesting process to watch. So, but no, all is good, and we've got some bylaws updates coming, but nothing, nothing more than that at this point.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Mayor and council comments. Member Fisher, you want to lead us off?
Sure. I don't have anything of great substance, other than to say, so I'm thrilled that Edina High School beat Eden Prairie tonight in basketball. Eden Prairie is a very good team this year, and we beat them 78 to 61. And it was a game that I was, like the game I was most looking forward to attending this year. And it was perfectly set up, because it was supposed to be last night, and our meeting, of course, is tonight, so it was very nicely aligned. And then a week ago, they changed the game to Wednesday night because of the caucuses. And so, very disappointing for me. But, so I will admit, once in a while, I was following a little Twitter to get the updates. So the good news is they won.
Good. Thank you. Member Staunton?
Nothing for me.
Member Brindle?
I have two things. Let's see. Well, two things plus a couple things. But anyway, I got an email from Joan Lonsberry, longtime Edina resident today. And in today's obituaries was an announcement for June Austin Schmidt. She was a council member in the 1970s. She was among the Edina council members. So remembering her, she, at the time of her death, lived in North Carolina. So, let's see here. No? Well, the memorial service is in Greenville, Tennessee. So, anyway. But, but anyway, just recognizing June, I imagine her photo is on the wall in the mayor's conference room downstairs. And then Harry Gustafson, longtime Edina resident, recently passed away at the age of 100. And he's significant in a couple of ways. He was a key player in the most recent development of the Grand View area. So when, when that area developed, and Vernon Avenue came through, and the master planning at that point was going on, he was a key player in that. So, I mean, he was always very proud of the work that he did in Edina, particularly in the Grand View area. So those are two of those announcements. And then I attended the League of Minnesota Cities Conference for Experienced Officials. Member Staunton was there as well. The topic was communication and those difficult conversations. And so they taught us a process of delivering a message, so that you can deliver it calmly. And then I participated in part of the Ellers Public Finance Conference, and went to the Economic Development Session, as well as a tour of the artery in Hopkins. That's a project in Hopkins that I've been watching carefully and with great interest, as they take 8th Avenue and take it from cars to be cars and non-motorized. And then over the top, it's a web of lights and art, and that is being put in place, and then artwork along the way. So it's, it's an innovative project, and it's fun to watch it happen.
Thank you. Member Stewart?
Thank you. Member Fisher, your comments reminded me that I haven't checked in a few days, but the last I looked, both the Edina High School Boys Hockey Team and the Edina High School Girls Hockey Team were ranked first in the state. So, a lot of good things going on over there. Since our last meeting on January 17th, there was a, on January 18th, there was a Metro Cities Board Meeting. I serve on the Board of Directors at Metro Cities and find the issues that our collection of cities are concerned about that often go before the state legislature. It's good to be able to work together with our other metro-area cities to help try to push forward the agenda that helps our communities. And on Friday, the 19th, all five of us, and City Manager Fisher and others, were at the legislative update that was provided for us regarding the issues going on at the state legislature.
You can characterize him as City Manager Fisher.
Sorry, City Manager Neal. Sorry.
You made him nervous.
Yeah. Sorry. Mike, are you applying?
Later, we're going to be talking about this guy.
On Monday, the 22nd, there were a number of things scheduled that got canceled because of a blizzard. So the Grand View Open House instead was held on Wednesday, the 24th. That was, I think, a useful meeting. I was able to participate in part of it. And then on Monday, the 29th, a week later, was a rescheduled meeting of the Edina Historical Society, which I thought was pretty interesting. We also, all of us have been participating in our commissioner candidate interviews. Once again, I'm impressed by the number of talented people who are willing to volunteer their time to serve our community, to make our community better. And I just, it's such a hard thing for us to have great, talented people, more applicants than we have positions. And so we have to choose among them. But I think we, as a community, all of us, can be happy that we have really good people who are interested in serving our community and doing that work. So, really good thing. On Saturday, the 27th of January, the mayor and I both attended a program at the Islamic Center that's in Minnetonka, just actually a few blocks from the Edina border, called Bridges for Peace. That was an interesting program, really intended by our Islamic neighbors to help everybody learn about the basics of Islam. And it was nicely done. Items that are coming up tomorrow, the 8th of February, there are three different things going on. From 5:00 to 8:00, there's an opening at the Art Gallery at the Edina Art Center. From 6:30 to 8 o'clock, there's a group called Neighbors for Affordable Housing that are meeting at Colonial Church. And there's a presentation by Bob Moore of the Edina Historical Society at the Grange Hall that'll go from 7 o'clock to 8:30. Coming up on the 15th is an HRA meeting. We now have those in the morning, so that's going to be 7:30 in the morning on the 15th. And Scott, I don't know if we're going to want to talk about schedules for the future of tonight's meeting. Perhaps we should.
We have to mention that, too.
And then on Monday, the 19th, is President's Day, which means we will not have our next meeting on Tuesday, but instead on Wednesday, the 21st. So, thank you.
Good. Thank you. I also attended the MLC Breakfast Event on Friday, the 19th. It was a good event. A lot of the area legislators from the south and west metro were there, and good attendance, I think, by all the cities that were involved in that legislative breakfast. This organization that we belong to, the Municipal Legislative Commission, has three metro-area legislative breakfasts. We had the one in Plymouth on the 19th that includes Edina. And then this morning, I attended another one in Eagan that covers the east and southeast metro, and that was another well-attended event. The next day after the Plymouth MLC Breakfast, I had a walk with the mayor, had about a half a dozen people show up at Southdale, had a good walk and talk with them. And then, just a reminder that on the 17th of February, we'll be, walk with the mayor again at the Southdale Mall. If you're interested in coming out, we meet at the Caribou Kiosk, right on the main level of the mall, and then we start walking and having good conversations. So please come and join us. It's a good activity, especially on a Saturday morning in the wintertime, and it's at 9 o'clock, so it's not too early, not too challenging from a time standpoint. From the 23rd of January to the 26th of January, I attended the U.S. Conference of Mayors. I'm going to give a little bit more in-depth report on that to my colleagues in time. We had one event with the Canadian Embassy that they sponsored on Thursday, the 25th. And also, I attended an event that evening for Eric Garcetti, the mayor of Los Angeles, who was being recognized by the Latino Network, which was really quite a well-attended event as well. And then just some terrific programs during that three-day period. And then, I just wanted to let folks know that I'll be, I'll be serving as the vice chair of the Standing Committee on Transportation for the U.S. Conference of Mayors. So I'm really looking forward to that work on a national basis, along with the regional work that I'm doing now on transportation. Member Stewart, as he mentioned, was at the Bridges for Peace event. We got there a little bit late because of other issues. And it was, that's the second time I've been to the Alaman Mosque in the last month. We were so warmly greeted. And I think Bob probably stayed for supper. They had some terrific food the night we were there, several of the mayors. We had to run over to St. Paul for, for some reason, I'm on the invite list for Vietnamese New Year's celebration. So, and I'm sure Member Stewart and I will be Sunday afternoon at the Chinese New Year's celebration at Valley View, which, and you can tell us what year it is. You always keep track of the...
I haven't looked at that.
I think it's the Year of the Dog, but you can take a look. So we'll be there. And I would encourage other people to come over there as well. They get a wonderful program that starts at noon at Valley View. And there'll be a couple thousand people there, Chinese-Americans from all over the metro, Sunday, this coming Sunday, at noon, in the, in the Valley View, the main gym. It'll be, you'll be so impressed by this event, celebrating the Chinese New Year by all of our Chinese-American residents and friends. Tomorrow morning, I'm going to, let's see, we had this 70th Keyhole Small Area Plan Open House on Saturday at the Senior Center. Went over to watch the first part of that. People were quite engaged. And then tomorrow morning, at 9 o'clock, I'm going to go over and read books for a half hour at Primrose School. And then Saturday night is the Chamber Gala, and I'll see Manager Neal there, and I think Member Staunton as well. So that's it for the calendar. This winter, I receive, and I get this regularly, it's Urban Land Institute Magazine that's published quarterly. This was the winter 2018 edition. And there were articles in here that I thought were so pertinent to all the land use activity we have going on in Edina. So I ordered copies for all my colleagues.
Oh, thank you.
And I'm going to pass some down that way. There's one for Manager Neal in there, and there's two coming this way. And I would urge you to take a look at the article, beginning on page 32, on public-private synergies, they call it, and then the ULI Global Awards for Excellence, starting on page 64. There's, I think, for us, in a community, living in a community and helping guide the community that has so much land use activity going on, you'll see some wonderful projects from all over the world here that may give us food for thought on some of the things that we want to be doing in Edina. So, and, oh, Mr. Teague, I got you one, too. So pass that on down. And then the last thing on my discussion list tonight is that for the past month or so, we've had a facilitator named Nick Reel, who used to be the mayor of Excelsior, who now does consulting work, engaged in the performance analysis for our city manager, Scott Neal. And from a process standpoint, I think that's worth discussing, we retained Nick as part of that process in terms of the interview we had with Manager Neal this evening. He did an anonymous survey of all the staff. He had 67 responders. We were able to review that data. Very, very positive reports, and I'll talk about it just in touch more detail. He did council interviews. Every single council member was interviewed at length. I think all those meetings went at least an hour. And then he asked Manager Neal to also do a self-evaluation on the... And then he asked Manager Neil to also do a self-evaluation on the things that he was hoping to accomplish and an assessment of how he thought he did, both on his 2017 self-work plan and then talking about his 2018 goals as well. So, the things that I think were common issues or common traits of Manager Neil that our council members mentioned to Nick Reel were that we consider Scott Neil a calm and experienced problem solver, that he's a very good staff leader. He recognizes the value of this council with respect to policymaking, and we know from experience with other communities that that's not always the way it works. But Manager Neil is very sensitive to that. The council appreciates his guidance and wisdom, as do his employees, who want more of that attention if they can get it, but there's only so much time in the day, and he's trying to manage a lot of different elements of our community. Uniformly, whether it's at the council level or the staff level, we find him to be totally trustworthy. We had one issue that we thought we wanted some further guidance on and some more work on, and that was communication issues with our residents. We want to make sure that our residents know that they're being heard and understood and have things done in a timely manner. And so, we're gonna look at some new communication strategies there to ever improve the way we communicate with our residents on a two-way basis. From a staff standpoint, I can tell folks generally that the staff find Scott to be very approachable, extraordinarily personable. His use of technology, as he says, allows him to be in multiple places at the same time. His staff appreciates that usage as well and that knowledge. He has a strong ability to coach, and I think that's one of the reasons we see people requesting more of his time, is that he's such a wonderful coach for people, and we encouraged him in that way as well. And one of the other traits that we found very important was that when he's making decisions that are either small or important in nature, or more important in nature, he goes to multiple sources of input before he makes these decisions that affect people. And as I said, we reviewed his 2017 goals with him and got his input on, you know, his evaluation of meeting those goals, and then we also talked about setting 2018 goals, and that's probably yet to come. So, that, I think that concludes in a general way the evaluation of Mr. Neil as our city manager, and we so much appreciate that you're here. We think you do a wonderful job on behalf of the council, on behalf of the staff, and I think, we believe on behalf of our residents as well. So, thank you again for the excellent work that you do. And I don't know if any of my colleagues have any other comments? Yes, Member Fisher?
I would like to just add a comment. This is the first time I've gone through this review process, and I found it really informative to read all the comments from staff and department heads and from us. And what occurred to me is that it's not an easy job, because you really have these constituencies, you know. We demand a lot. We need a lot. Your, you know, your team, all of our staff at the city, need your leadership. The folks out there require a lot, and that's tough to have all those constituencies. And everything we heard, I thought the mayor did a great job. It was very impressive, you know, the input that we got from all those levels. And I would just add one more that wasn't part of this. I get to a lot of, in my day job, I, you know, I'm out and about and a lot of, I was at the same Ellers Conference, except it was for my other job. And, you know, I sit at a lot of tables with a lot of city managers and city administrators. And inevitably, when you get in a conversation and you mention, it comes out that I'm on the city council in Edina, the first thing people say is Scott Neil, and these are his peers. They have unbelievable respect for him. And so, your stature out there is pretty impressive as well. So, I feel really fortunate, you know, we've got a really good city manager here.
And as we see your beard growing up, we know a lot of people in St. Paul admire you, too. The upcoming parade, middle of March, that you like to attend in full bloom.
It's trimmed on March 20th this year, yeah.
Right.
I just wanna tell you...
So, manager's comments.
Yeah, just thank you for all those kind words. It's a privilege to work here. I've really got, I get to work with a great team of people every day, and that's a good deal of where my success comes from. So, I appreciate working with council members as well. I'm fortunate to have a supportive and forward-looking council to work for as well. So, thank you.
And I think we mentioned upstairs, just one final comment, that, you know, our residents in the Quality of Life Survey talk about their interactions with our staff, and it always gets extraordinarily high marks in terms of their perception of the quality of those interactions. And I think that's a direct reflection on you as a manager of people as well. So, you should feel good about how people in our community think about the people that work for our city.
Thank you.
All right. Any other comment? You know, Manager Neil, you want to talk a little bit about Centennial Lakes Park Bridges, and you maybe got some other comments as well?
Before we go to that, can I just make one more?
Sure.
It's, the problem when you go first is you can't, I have to have a response. I just have to catch something you said at the MLC breakfast that you said you attended. And that is true, technically. But the real truth is that you facilitated, you were the, you were the person really facilitating that conversation. And so, I'm just blown away, and I've talked to people in other cities that were there as well, and they have the same feeling, that I'm still stunned by how you can work your way around a room facilitating a conversation with legislators from all of these different districts. You know them by first name, and you know what committees they're on, and just the way that you made that whole meeting happen, I feel an immense pride in that you represent our city like that. And I think if people understood all of the stuff you're doing, not only in this city, but in this region, and now even nationally, it's really reflecting great on our city. So, thank you for that.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Member Fisher. Very kind of you.
Yeah, for those who don't know, Jim chairs the TAB locally here on the Transportation Advisory Board for Met Council, and now has been asked to serve in a similar capacity on the national level.
Yeah, Vice Chair of the Standing Committee on Transportation and Communications.
Right.
And the chair is the mayor of Plano, Texas, and then I'm the vice-chair.
Well, we're well-represented. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Manager Neil?
Thank you, your honor. Before I get started with the proposal I want to make to you tonight, I want to go back and reference a subject we were gonna talk about very quickly, and that is this upcoming schedule of HRA meetings. Because of the quirkiness of our first three months of this year and the number of Wednesday meetings we have, and just the way the calendar fell, we would be, if we keep the current schedule of HRA meetings on Thursday mornings, we're gonna miss Councilmember Stewart, Commissioner Stewart, or the first three of them. And we've got some very important issues that are coming before the council. So, I'm gonna take, and we'd really like all of you there, if we can...
For half of the first three months?
Yeah.
Because it's only the first meeting.
It's a quirk in our schedule. I want you to know, we're gonna take a look at it from the staff standpoint, see if we can rejigger it just a little bit to make it, to make it still work for all of you.
Okay.
Okay?
Great.
Okay, so now getting to the presentation I want to give.
I think it is critically important that we all be there for all the important work we've gotta go.
To the extent we can, we can't, we can't work around everybody's, but if there's a structural schedule, and I think that's the issue that we have with Commissioner, Councilmember Stewart, we want to try to fix that.
Thank you.
So, now that I know that you like me, I want to ask you for a bunch of money. But it's for a very good cause. It's the Centennial Lakes Bridge Replacement Project. I think you're all familiar with the Centennial Lakes pedestrian bridges. This is a view from, this is an aerial view of the north bridge and the south bridge. And this is what one of those bridges looks like. It was built in 1991 with the original Phase I of the park construction. In December of 2015, we received a study from EECom that we commissioned to take a look at the bridges, their condition, and their replacement. We advanced a project into the market. We got bids back. We thought we were going to be able to replace two bridges for $880,000. That is not the kind of bids we got back. Way too high. So, we decided we'd rebid it. We rejected those bids in August of 2016. We rebid the project again in late 2017. We opened those bids in January of 2018. There is a lowest responsible bid by Rostie Construction, but it was still more than what we had budgeted. So, we had, if you'll remember, we took a $740,000 park fee that we got from the Opus Development, that's now called the Loden, and we allocated that directly to this project. We added an additional $40,000 from our stormwater fund. So, we had about $780,000, but it wasn't enough. And I'll show you what that budget looks like in a second. That bid expires on February 21st, which is the reason I'm in front of you tonight. We'd like to make a recommendation to you to award that contract, and I want to show you how and why we might do that. Reason to replace these bridges, you saw what they look like just a little bit ago. ADA, they're not ADA compliant. They didn't have to be when they were built in 1991, but they are certainly not ADA compliant. Poor physical condition. I'll show you some pictures of what they look like currently now. Health, which leads to some threats to the health and safety of our park visitors and staff. Taking, replacing these bridges has the impact of improving access to the entire park, because we'll be able to have boats actually go down to the South Pond, which they can't currently do today. And beauty, improving these, taking these bridges out and replacing them is a definite aesthetic upgrade. So, that's the, that's what the current bridge looks like, and the condition of these bridges is terrible. This is what the under, this is an under structure of the bridge. You can see that it's breaking. It's a look of, I think, a stair. This is walking up to the top of the, I think this is the north, the north bridge, and you can see a hole in it, and you can see right next to it where a pretty significant hole was patched.
And significant amount of salt.
And salt, yeah.
Ms. Waddick's earlier presentation.
And Tom Shirley tells us that we put up these, we put up these tarps under the bridge because material falls off this bridge, and it could fall on people. And so, we want it to fall into these tarps so that we don't hurt anybody or it doesn't hurt the ice. So, we, as I said before, we allocated, we had $780,000 allocated to this project. The best bid came from Rostie Construction. The base bid was $984. Some alternates for landscaping and lighting came in at $134 for a total project of just over a million, 1.1 million. So, our shortfall between our CIP and our budget is $339,000. Project alternatives for the council is do one bridge now, do another one later, do both of them now, but take the quality level down. Don't replace either of them now, save that money, and we'll rebid them again to see if we can have them both come in at a better bid, maybe appropriate more money for them in a future CIP. Or do both bridges now as they've been bid. This is what, this is the bridge, quality of bridge that we're going to replace the previous bridge with. This bridge is a full ADA compliant bridge, and I'll show you what the design looks like. Very quickly, you can tell that this is more than just a simple bridge replacement. It's, it's the run-up to the bridge, and on both sides, it's gonna be significantly different in order to get the grades that we need. Our recommendation is that we go ahead and replace both of these bridges at the same time. The advantages are one disruption period, not two disruption periods. For construction, the current condition of the bridges is very poor. They need to be replaced as soon as we can. It remedies the ADA issue sooner rather than later. There's a little bit of project momentum right now in terms of how we've been working with the watershed districts and the park and the park users themselves, and we've got a bid that we could go with. And of course, just as soon as we can have the better aesthetics, the operational advantages, we'd like to have that. That's what the layout of the bridge plan is for the north side, and that's what the bridge plan is for the south side. So, the proposal is to ask you to approve the reallocation of $350,000 to the Centennial Lakes Bridge Replacement Project from two sources. One source is $275,000 from the 2016 general fund surplus, which was 1.1, $1.8 million. That money was approved by the council to be put into our construction fund, but it hasn't been allocated to any projects. We will be doing that later this year. And the second source is $75,000, and that's from recently collected Centennial Lakes maintenance fees. We have been looking at our maintenance fees and making sure people have been paying them, and some folks hadn't, hadn't been billed correctly by the city. So, we've been recouping some additional dollars, and we can contribute some of those additional dollars to this project. So, we'd like to ask you to reallocate those dollars, authorize that, and to direct staff to prepare a contract award that you would give a contract award action at the February 21st council meeting, and just a quick juxtaposition of what we got now and what we'd be getting in the future. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Member Fisher?
Scott, have we been in communication with this low bidder? Are they, they've had time to think about this? They're still comfortable with their bid?
They are.
That's not an issue?
Yep.
Does this have some contingency built in?
It does, yeah. I don't, I don't have that with me right now, but there's a typical project budget and there's contingency.
Okay. That's all I have.
Member Staunton?
So, I'm trying to remember the numbers. Maybe if you could, if you could skip back a couple of slides to the, yeah, right, nope, the next one, right there. So, the $350,000 that we would supplement with $275 from the general fund surplus and $75 from the maintenance fees. So, that, you know, I mean, the question that occurs to me is what are, what else is competing for those fees, for those funds?
What else is competing for the maintenance fees? Nothing. What else is competing for the $2,000, for the $275,000? It will be quite a number of projects, actually. So, if that money stays where it is right now, it'll be in the general kitty, and we will reallocate that like we do every other year by having people propose their projects and ranking them and bringing that to the council. That's where that, that's where that money is parked right now. We know that we've got another million, between a million and a million-two, I think, from 2017, that we'll be putting into that same CIP construction fund from 2017.
But, I mean, can you give us a sense of what, in the past, what kinds of projects do we fund out of the construction fund?
Oh, projects just like this.
CIP types?
Yeah.
So, like, if we were talking about the Bretison Park Bridge, that might be...
Absolutely.
Something that might come out of this?
Yes, it would. Yeah. What you're doing, what I'm asking you in a sense is, this is a project that would be funded from this funding source. I'm asking you to...
Advance it.
...approve it out of order, in a sense, because we've got a contractor who's ready to go, and if we award this project, we can begin the process of making the plans to do this project later this fall. And I believe the plan, Mr. Milner, if you can correct me, is to, is that this is a project that would take off after the art fair in the fall. Is that right?
Correct. And is, how did this bid compare to the bid we rejected?
Do you recall? I think they were pretty close. This one might have been...
I guess what I'm driving...
This one is a little lower than the ones we rejected, but it's not, but it's not close to what we were hoping to get for 2015.
Right, so the next question on that arc is, you know, one of the options was to reject and try again. I'm assuming that you're telling us that you don't, you're not optimistic about getting lower than that.
I am telling you that, because now we've tested, we've tested our bid that we got from, the estimate that we got from EECom...
Twice.
Twice, and the market has told us twice that it's, that estimate was too low.
Do we have any sense of why that is?
I don't have a sense of why that is. It's a complicated site, for one thing.
Unique kind of project?
I think there's some access challenges to the site, and we've tried to allow them where they can come in and out. But, yeah, it's a very unique site to work around here, working over in a small little pedestrian corridor.
And remind me again, who was it who did the estimate for us?
A company called EECom.
And have we used them on other projects, and have they been accurate in the past?
Well, their name was different when they did the original Centennial Lakes. So, it's Greg Brown did the original stuff at EECom. He's at Keenley Horn, and we went with him, because he's been doing the design of these bridges. Yes, so we worked with both firms before EECom did our water treatment plant.
So, they've had a good...
Jerry's, Keenley Horn's been a lot of work.
They've had a good track record of doing those pretty accurate estimates. This is, you feel like this is just a one-off because of the unusual circumstances, the access, et cetera?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Member Fisher?
I'll just say, because I feel the pain on this whole cost estimating thing, for some reason, especially with park projects, I think it's because they're small... some reason, especially with park projects, I think it's because they're small, you can't, you know, we've had toilet buildings that are, you know, five, $600 of foot. It defies all logic, but they're just, it's really costly to do park projects for some reason.
Yeah, and we got one coming that I'm feeling that. I'm warming up for that one. Trying to understand how... Yeah, right.
And I think, you know, one thing I can say with great certainty, the cost of construction is not going down. So, we might have been basing this a lot on hope, but it's not going down. And so, that's why I think we should just, if we have the ability to get it done, we have a bid that's, the contractor's ready to stand by, and we can fix some, make some big improvements. I think we just gotta move on it.
Yeah, they're beautiful improvements. What's the timing on the project? Is it starting in the fall? How long would it take them to get them both done?
I think it'd be, majority of it would be done this fall, with some restoration next spring around the facility, but they can, you know, it's most September, October, and then into November to finish it up. But I think the only other comment is, if we don't do this, we're gonna have to start to close these bridges entirely, because there's gonna be...
Right.
Then we've got people making a long walk around.
Yeah. That was gonna be my comment.
And to your point about we were gonna do this anyway, is that because in our CIP, this was kind of next up? We had, have we done any prioritizing about this already?
We, well, have we?
Well, it was on the schedule for this past fall.
Which is why we bid it in the first place, right?
Yeah, but I don't think it rose to the funded, I don't think it rose to the funded level.
Kind of next on deck.
But you can see, I mean, not just the quality of that bridge, but you can see from the concept, the site plan, that there's, this is more than just a couple of bridges. It's really making pretty significant changes to the paths leading up to the bridge.
Well, my comment would be, I do not want to compromise and do something of lower quality. That's what we decided on. Centennial Lakes is the park that we have the most visitors of any park in our city, and many of these visitors come from all over the country. So, and they, and some come because they want to see Centennial Lakes. It has a reputation. So, I think that it's important that we do what we set out to do, and the fact that we get the accessible bridges out of this is very important. So, I think where you identified as funding sources to fill the gap, that sounds fine. So, thank you.
An interesting aspect of this, I think, is that the reconstruction of that southern bridge would then give folks the ability to get into the water area where the five office buildings are located.
Right.
You could boat over for lunch at Lou Nanny's.
Yeah.
If you want to rent your paddle boat.
So, the flotation bridge would be removed.
Tavern 23 now.
Tavern 23. There you go. I would support doing it now, too, I think, based on the good analysis that we've had on it. And we've got the funding sources to do it, and it sounds like from member Fisher's experience, based on his other day job, that we should be thinking hard about doing it. So, is there a motion to adopt the city manager's recommendation that we authorize the reconstruction or the construction of two new Centennial Lakes Park Bridges?
Still moved.
Is there a second? We got a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
So, on your agenda for your next meeting, there will be an action to award the contract for this project, and we'll reference this action tonight and the funding sources as well.
Okay. Very good. Anything else on the manager's reporting?
Yep.
A portion of the agenda? All right. That caused anyone else on the council to think of anything else they wanted to bring up?
Nope.
For our colleagues? All right. You stand adjourned.
Jennifer? These power cords are terrific.